It's one thirty and is the time in our schedule to hear file AM zero zero one eight dash two oh and ZC zero zero one five dash two zero. Um, before we start, is there anybody that's got a hearing or visual impairment that needs some assistance? Seen none, I'll call for conflicts of interest.
We have no conflict of interest.
We have no conflict.
And Commissioner McDonald, I have no conflict. And so with that, can we pull up the minute, the minute, the meeting process so everyone can see it?
They probably know it as good as you do.
Yeah, you might. We have that available? Oh, we gotta postpone the hearings when I'm available, just kidding. Mouse disabled screen, Cherry. Okay, so basically, these hearings are quasi judicial in nature. Um, we're gonna have the staff do their presentation of the file. Uh, the app coming get a chance to give us an overview of the project and answer any questions to the commissioners. Uh, we'll get into public testimony. Everyone will have three minutes. You have the ability to gift your time to somebody if you've, if they've got more they wanna say than will be encapsulated in three minutes. Um, we uh, we'll start with those in support, go to neutral, which there's rarely anybody, um, and then go to um, those opposed. Uh, the, at that point, once we get through that, we'll go ahead and have uh, the applicants rebuttal and staff will, will have an opportunity rebut as well. Um, and then we will close uh, close the, the meeting for any further public comment. And the commissioners will deliberate and hopefully come to a decision of one sort or another. So with that, I will turn it over to staff to go ahead and start the presentation.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, this is Jason Johnson of Bonner County Planning. We're here today to discuss file AM zero zero one eight dash two zero and file ZC zero zero one five dash two zero. It's a request for a comprehensive plan map amendment and a zone change. So the applicant is requesting a comp plan map amendment from Ag Forest Land Rural Residential and a zone change from Ag Forestry ten to rural five. The area in question is highlighted in blue on the aerial as well as the dates of the required noticing for this file. Um, at this point, we've had so many hearings, I assume most folks are familiar with the area in question here. Site is currently zoned Ag Forest ten within agricultural forestry land use designation. Site is fairly unremarkable in natural features. Uh, there are a few steep slopes in the northwestern corner, that's all. Site is mostly prime farmland according to county GIS. These are the agencies that were noticed in the course of reviewing this file. So at the time of staff report preparation on this De novo hearing, over a dozen public comments were received. Um, a summary of the concerns outlined in these comments are concerned over spot zoning, presence of nearby agriculture, the presence of prime farmland soils on the site. Concerns about water and septic availability, concerns over wildlife and concern over fire or emergency safety. Uh, other comments that were received after preparation and finalization, staff report restated these same concerns. Two petitions opposing this proposal were submitted. Uh, of course, there's no provision in Bonner County code or in the comp plan to evaluate petitions and the consideration of land use decisions. And all the previous public and agency comments submitted in this file were included in the record and forwarded to the commissioners for re-review prior to this year. We did get a comment from Idaho Fish and Game on this. There was some concern over impacted development on Hootood Creek. The comment stated that there will be plentiful wildlife habitat remaining with large tracts of state of Idaho, Connecty National Forest, and agricultural lands near the proposed application area remaining. There was concern over human wildlife interactions. Uh, they closed out their letter with, in summary, wildlife use will be negatively impacted within the immediate areas where conversion of forests to further subdivision and development occur. While the habitat and many of the species are currently common and similar resources are available nearby, continued development will change the abundance, diversity, and distribution of wildlife within Bonner County. Spirit Lake Fire submitted comments. Um, the comments opened with in consideration of splitting the zone Dag Forest Land. Of course, we're not here today to consider a split. We're here today to consider a comp plan amendment and a zone change. There's no proposal to split land. Um, it wouldn't be appropriate to review this comp plan amendment or this zone change request as though it's a subdivision. But if a subdivision is proposed, uh, it would be helpful if these comments were submitted at that time. Comment from Panhandle Health, they received eight site evaluation applications for this site and in the locations assessed, suitable septic locations were identified in all eight. All other agencies either required, replied no comment or did not respond. Of course, several previous staff reports have been prepared on this proposal, seven, several previous presentations have been given. Uh, these previous staff reports and presentations are in the record and were forwarded to Board of County Commissioners prior to this hearing. As well as previously submitted public and agency comments were forwarded to the board prior to this year. This was uh, heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the December sixteenth, twenty twenty one public hearing. They recommended denial of both applications. January fourteenth, twenty twenty two PNC recommendation letter to the Board of County Commissioners was included in the record sent to the board. So getting into the review of the proposal here. Um, I'll just go ahead and read the definition for what Ag Forest Land is out of the comprehensive plan here. The Ag Forest Land Use Designation recognizes areas where steeper slopes prevail, thirty percent or greater, and transportation is provided by private roads or US Forest Service or state roads. Urban services are not available and residential development challenges are present due to slope or soil conditions, hazard areas, and lack of police or fire services. So of course, the site is mostly flat, as we saw. Access is provided by Spirit Lake Cut Off, which is a secondary arterial, paved with hot mix asphalt in its county owned and maintained. Site does not feature urban or water service. The site has no obvious challenges to residential development, has no known hazard areas, has police and fire ambulance services. Um, this next point is something I'd like to call out specifically to the commissioners here. Um, in previous hearings, it kinda seems like this gets missed. In multiple public comments, and I'm sure a lot of people came here today prepared to stand up and give testimony to the prime soils on the site. Prime soils are not in the definition for Ag Forest Land, and they never have been. Instead, it says the opposite. It says that poor soil conditions are characteristic of Ag Forest Land. Um, this didn't seem to get focused on in the previous hearing, and I wanted to call that out. There's nothing in this definition about prime farmland. Prime soils, good quality soils, just the opposite. So this site does not appear suited to the comprehensive plan designation of Ag Forest Land, as it is missing all but one criteria, and it's missing every unique criteria. The lack of urban services alone is not sufficient to designate this as Ag Forest. A lack of urban services is also standard found in a rural residential land use designation. So rural residential is the designation requested by the applicant. And the rural residential area provides for residential development in areas where urban services are not available, so it's a very thirty percent. These areas include hazard areas and critical wildlife habitats where lower densities reduce potential impacts to resources and exposure to loss of property or lives. Small scale agricultural uses and residential developments are permitted. So of course sewer and water are not present on the site. There are no map slopes of thirty percent or greater. There are no known hazard areas. This designation per the comprehensive plan was designated specifically to accommodate wildlife habitat, including critical wildlife habitat. No agency comments called this out as critical wildlife habitat. Um, but honestly, it wouldn't have made a difference if they had. It's designed to accommodate critical wildlife habitat. I'm sure there are comments that we've received and folks came here today to talk about safety on the road ingress egress. Again, it just, that's not consistent with the comprehensive plan. It serves to reduce potential impacts and exposure to loss of property or lives. Small scale agricultural uses are going to still be allowed on the site as well as residential development. This site has no features that make it incompatible with the rural residential land use designation. And so there appears to be no reason to deny the applicant request to re-designate this site as rural residential. So as far as the zoning goes, the site in question is currently zoned AF ten. This zone is appropriate in areas designated by the comp plan as Ag Forest Land. But as previously said, stated, this site is not suited to that comp plan designation. Because this site isn't suited to that designation, it follows that it's not appropriate for the site to remain zoned as AF ten. So the rural zoning district is established to allow low density residential uses that are compatible with rural pursuits. Limiting residential densities and permitted uses to those that are compatible with rural character. Again, the zoning code specifically calls out that the requested zoning designation is compatible with rural character. And can be adequately supported by rural service levels. Small scale farming and forestry activities are allowed. Tourism and our recreation uses can be supported by rural service letters. Levels are compatible with rural character. And the purpose is accomplished by encouraging development configurations that create permanent open space or farming areas, protect sensitive environmental features, reduce infrastructure costs, and/or enhance recreational opportunities. So there are two possible zones that we can go with in the rural zoning designation, R ten or R five. R ten zoning is for areas designated as rural residential that meet one or more of the following criteria. Characterized by slopes deeper than thirty percent that are located within critical wildlife habitat that contain primage soils that are served by private roads or state roads that are within the floodway or that contain limited access to public services. And R five zoning should be used in areas designated as rural residential in the comp plan that are already developed at or near the one dwelling unit per five acre density and/or do not meet the criteria of R ten. So of course, the applicant has requested a zone of R five. Site has no features that make it incompatible with rural residential land use designation. And it has no unique features that make it compatible with its current designation of Ag Forest. So because of this, it follows that either R ten or R five zoning should be applied to the site. So of course, the site is not characterized by steep slopes. It has no critical wildlife habitat. It does contain primage soils. The site is served by Spirit Lake Cut Off, county owned and maintained and paved. Site is not within the floodway. It was not contained limited access to public services. So the site should be designated as R ten if it meets one or more of the previous criteria unless per B C R C twelve dash three two three B two, the site in question is in an area already developed at or near the one dwelling unit per five acre density. So the immediate northeast of the site in question is a subdivided area of fifty parcels. Forty-eight out of fifty of those parcels are less than ten acres in size. Thirty-five of the fifty are less than seven and a half acres in size. In other words, the site in question is already in an area that was at or near the one dwelling unit per five acre density. And this feature alone is enough to clarify that the appropriate zoning for this property is rural five, not rural ten. Of course, the area in question is in yellow. The adjacent five acre type parcels are immediately to the northeast in blue. So at the previous hearing, uh, there were some questions as to why this language was included, what is it for, why is it here? Um, there were public comments to the effect of, so just because it was done before, does that mean we have to do it again? Uh, in a word, for the comprehensive plan, yes, that is what that means. You do have to do that again. B C R C twelve dash three two three B two is a clustering provision to fulfill the goal of clustering as called for in the comprehensive plan. Staff has gone ahead and extracted some examples of this from the comp plan. Comprehensive plans full facilities and transportation component objectives and policies. Development should be encouraged to cluster to reduce impact on school and transportation costs and needs. Natural resources component for whitetail deer, mule deer, elk, winter range and calving habitat. Moose habitat says repeatedly that clustering of building sites should be done so as to maximize continuous open space. Implementation component of the comp plan natural resources section. Development standards should be designed to encourage cluster development and preservation of open space and wildlife habitat. Housing component needs assessment, examine zoning and land use barriers to housing for the lower income residents and the workforce from cities and county. The assessment noted the need for smaller lot sizes, cluster developments, frenzy bonuses and incentives to developers for affordable housing projects. Implementation component, transportation to reduce transportation costs, road building and environmental impacts, cluster development shall be encouraged. Comprehensive plan implementation component, housing, clustering of housing to save on infrastructure and transportation costs is encouraged. Comprehensive plan implementation component, community design to promote and preserve the natural features and rural atmosphere of the community. The county should enact development standards that address cluster development. The language is in here because it fulfills the goal of clustering as per the comprehensive plan. Also, in the previous hearing, there was some question as to what the word area meant. Um, I don't remember who exactly brought it up. Um. The, I think some court precedent was cited that area means parcel. I'm not a warrior. I'm a planner. Um, I can tell you, we do not use parcel and area uh, as synonyms in my department. Um, but in any case, that's not really a question because we do have an area defined in our code. Uh, per B C R C twelve dash eight hundred A six general rules for the use of language. Terms not defined within Title eleven of this code or this title shall have the meaning customarily assigned to them as defined in Webster's dictionary. That's specifically the Merriam-Webster Collegiate Dictionary eleventh edition. We don't have undefined words in our code. Whenever we have a word that isn't specifically defined in the definition section, that definition can be found in this specific dictionary. So I'd like to just go over the definition of area. This is just a direct copy paste from Merriam-Webster's eleventh edition here. A level piece of ground might be what we're talking about. Maybe definition two, that's more like finding the area of a square or rectangle, and we use acres for that. Uh, definition three, scope of a concept operation arc, in other words, that's not my area of expertise. Thought I was to use that word in a sentence, not really what we're talking about. Definition five B, geographic region. So I don't know what parcel means in other jurisdictions, but in this one, it means what's there on the screen. It means a geographic region, area, area is not a synonym for parcel. Just again, geographic region. Staff looked at this map and determined that the yellow is in the same geographic region as the blue. Couple of important additions before concluding here first. Uh, the comprehensive plan does not contradict itself. This seems to be coming up a lot in hearings lately. Um. That one part of the comprehensive plan somehow invalidates another part. That's not how it should be read. It was adopted as a single document. Land use designations, the definitions that we saw here today in the land use section of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan, they were created to be consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Another thing that comes up more and more is arguments that the zoning code is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and should be ignored or reinterpreted. For B C R C twelve dash one one one. Zoning regulations in districts for the unincorporated areas of Bonner County as herein established have been made in accordance with the comprehensive plan in Idaho code for the purpose of promoting health, safety, and general welfare of the people of Bonner County. The zoning code is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and if there's any doubt about whether or not we should see it that way immediately after. B C R C twelve dash one one two, the provisions of B C R C Title twelve shall be interpreted to carry out the purpose and intent of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. And if we need to know what shall means in this case, shall is mandatory and it is not discretionary for B C R C twelve dash one 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 or one one two D one. So in conclusion here, a review of the land use section of the Bonner County Comp Plan reveals the characteristics of the area in question are not consistent with the current land use designation of Ag Forest Land. This review of the land use section of the Bonner County Comp Plan further reveals that the characteristics of the area in question are consistent with the land use designation of rural residential. This area should therefore be designated as rural residential. Since the land use designation of rural residential is appropriate for this property, this leaves zoning choices of rural ten or rural five as appropriate. As previously shown, site in question is in an area already developed at or near the one dwelling unit per five acre density. As previously shown, the comprehensive plan calls for clustering. I think you might have hit the light switch there. Calls for the clustering of development over a half dozen times. The density in this geographic area requires that this site be rezoned to rural five for B C R C twelve dash three two three B two. Staff therefore continues to recommend approval of the request for a comprehensive plan map amendment from Ag Forest to rural residential and a zone change from Ag Forest ten to rural five. That concludes my presentation. Were there any questions from the commissioners?
Gentlemen, do you have any questions for staff?
I do. I read Jason. So the clustering, I mean, that came up time and time again in your, in your presentation, and, and I'm just not sure the definition of clustering of five acres versus ten acres versus, you know, groups of houses overall. I would say it's more of the latter, like clustered in, in pods of like ten over a five acre and, and so that the, the majority of the property then stays open. So we've seen in the uh, some of the subdivisions that we've seen um, down in the past, only one actually, what was, you know, where they, where they grouped the homes all coast to the county road and they left the rest of the property open. So I guess I'm confused about this being, are you saying that this, in real opinion, there was a cluster of homes at five acres?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know, just, you know, the comp plan stuff, you know, when you were referring to the comp plan, it says the objectives, future development show not adversely impacting existing transportation system by reducing the quality or level of service or creating hazards or congestion. Um, then it also said roads within the redevelopment will be built to county standards at the expense of the developer. Um, I guess those are questions that I'm not sure we have the answer to.
No, not at this stage. The roads would be developed during the subdivision or the roads, which would be looked at during the subdivision stage. I mean, it may be possible that a subdivision gets denied.
Because they can't answer the questions. Because they couldn't answer the questions.
Or they didn't have a satisfactory answer.
Yeah.
Or couldn't meet the requirements.
All right, that's all for now.
Steve, you got anything?
Not at this moment.
Okay. Thank you, staff. I can tell you, Jason, I guess.
Dan before you move on. Jason, can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
Um, I, I, and we've had lots of hearings here, and so I don't wanna, I don't wanna try to confuse the issue, but you mentioned that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial. Is that correct?
Yes.
Can you please just discuss a little bit more about what the, the basis was for the recommendation?
I wish I could. Um, to be honest, um, I'm not terribly clear. They said it was inconsistent with the land use portion of the comprehensive plan. The majority of the hearing was spent discussing a different land use designation entirely. That, that was, there was a lot of discussion that they thought it would be better as a third land use designation that wasn't under consideration. But they adopted the findings of fact as written. And then came to a different conclusion. So.
Really? Okay, keep going.
Like I said, I'm, I'm not here to, I can't speak to the mindset of Planning and Zoning Commission, of course.
Okay.
All I can say is the Planning and Zoning Commission said that it was inconsistent with the land use portion of the comprehensive plan.
Anything else, sir?
Thank you, Jason. Um, now we have the opportunity to hear from the owner's representatives. Make sure you state your name to the record. Everybody, it's important that, in order to get through this, we need to make sure that everyone stays in order. If you don't feel that you can remain in order, um, I will invite you to leave. So please try to keep things together.
Uh, thank you, commissioners and planning staff. My name is Jeremy Grimm. We are Whiskey Rock Planning and Consulting. Professional land use planner. I've been working in Bonner County since two thousand and seven. Former planning and community development director for the city of Sandpoint. Uh, here tonight representing Mr. Dom in his uh, request. File AM oh oh one eight twenty and ZC zero zero one five two zero. I'm just gonna speak to a couple of things today. First, some facts about the property, talk about state and Bonner County code. Talk about rural character, uh, talk about soil and open space and water, traffic and agency concerns, and then touch on our housing crisis. Um, I'm glad that uh, your council brought up the P and Z meeting and that question because uh, if you had the chance to listen to that video of that hearing or review the minutes, you'll see that as a quasi judicial hearing. Um, prior to me starting the public hearing and hearing testimony, uh, members of the planning commission were already engaging, showing a bias in a definite opinion of the application prior to hearing the details and the facts of the case. So we're here today to talk about a comp plan map amendment. Mag Forest ten and, and Foresty ten to rural residential and a zone change from Ag Forest to rural, Forest ten to rural five. So we're here, we were here about a year ago upstairs working on the same, same, same effort. The property is a hundred and sixty acres. Currently, uh, potential lots have approved through a subdivision would be sixteen under the current zoning, and what we're talking about this change would do is it would make it potentially available for thirty-two. Again, this is not the process or the application to subdivide it into five acre parcels. If the comp plan and zone chess request, change request were approved, the subdivision process would govern the splitting of the parcel into five acre or larger lots. The subdivision process and building location process address concerns regarding sanitary sewer, road layout, traffic, and other improvements in stormwater. The property has access off of Spirit Lake Cut Off, and uh, Spirit Lake Cut Off is a secondary arterial. It's paved with hot mix asphalt and is county owned and maintained. Uh, other services, there are no water, there's no water service available at this time. If developed in the future, wells would be required. There's no sewer, sewer service at this time. If developed, septic systems would be required. Uh, fire services provided by Spirit Lake Power uh, is available and School District, Bonner County, uh, eighty-three. Ambulance District, Bonner County Ambulance District. According to uh, Bonner County Code and staff, the application was considered complete and routed to agencies accordingly. Uh, per Bonner County Code twelve three twenty, you have zoning districts and maps designations. And in that purpose, I wanna highlight that um, those areas are set forth shall be used to guide the application of the zones and designations to all lands in unincorporated Bonner County. The purpose statements also shall guide interpretation and application of land uses. And when we look at Merriam-Webster's uh, definitions, a guide is a device for studying or directing and then to interpret in light of individual belief, judgment, or circumstance. And uh, commissioners to you today, this falls heavily on you. And, uh, commissioners to you today, this falls heavily on you because it is truly your individual belief. Judgment and circumstance backed up by your comprehensive plan that should guide your decision here. You mentioned what's being requested is a, a zone change, uh, Bonner County Code, Idaho Code sixty-seven, sixty-five, eleven. Speaks to the authority you have to make zone changes. You can amend and repeal zone changes as long as they're in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And in accordance means something different to everyone. Uh, it's interpretive and it's not, uh, generally considered. Not in conflict with the comprehensive plan. And I want to just point out one brief of many sections of the comprehensive plan. From chapter fourteen, page eight, currently there is more agricultural land than necessary to meet the market demands. The comprehensive plan talks about. Objectives and policies. Current zoning districts should be evaluated. That's what we're doing here today. Uh, to determine changes to density are needed. Uh, and especially changes that could encourage small acreage farming or small scale agricultural opportunities. Further in the comp plan, it states that. There's an opportunity to include regulations that promote agriculture, especially small acreage farming. This request before you today could encourage small acreage farming and small scale agricultural opportunities. In the action plan from the comprehensive plan. Uh, the planning department staff and commission should review county land use laws and zoning districts to broaden housing choices. That's what you're doing today and that's what we're seeking to do. As the community continues to grow, there will be added challenges. I have no doubt this is a challenge for you. It's been a challenge, I think, for everyone in this room. To find suitable, developable land while balancing the various goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. I would put forth, when you look at land in Bonner County, this parcel is suitable and it's developable, as stated in the staff report. For the staff report, when discussing the Ag Forest Land designation, this site does not appear suited. To the comprehensive plan designation of Ag Forest Land as it is missing almost every criteria for this designation. Whereas the rural resi- residential designation in the staff report states that this site has no features that make it incompatible with the rural residential land use designation and therefore appears. There appears to be no reason to deny the applicant request to re-designate this site as rural residential. We look at, uh, Bonner Co- County Code twelve, three, two, three, the rural district. Talks about low density residential uses that are compatible with rural pursuits. Living in residential densities and permitted uses to builds that are compatible with rural character. And nearby, nearby resource production districts and sites that can be adequately supported by rural service levels. And allowing small scale farming, supported by rural services, service levels and are compatible with rural character. The Ag Forest Land designation. For the staff report, this site does not appear suited to the comprehensive plan designation of Ag Forest Land. As it is missing almost every criteria for this designation. The requested zoning designation of rural five. For the staff report, this site has no features that make it incompatible with the rural residential land use designation. Since the land in question is compatible with the rural residential land use designation. It follows that either your choice, rural ten or rural five zoning should be applied as appropriate. I put forth that the site is served by Spirit Lake Fire, North South Northern Lights, Bonner County School District, Bonner County Ambulance District. And so does not contain limited access to public services. For Bonner County Code twelve, three, two, three, rural residential designation should be zoned as R ten if it meets one or more of the criteria above unless, as staff stated. Uh, the site in question is already in an area developed at or near the one dwelling per five acre density. So there was some discussion prior, prior hearings about contiguous in area touching. Um, I just want to point out Idaho Code Title sixty-three, six, oh, four. In the agricultural taxation definitions, contiguous means being in actual contact or touching along a bounded point. The Dom property is contiguous to an area already developed at the five acre density. And as staff pointed out, thirty-five parcels in the vicinity, many contiguous are already developed at or near. The one dwelling for five acre density consistently with Bonner County Code twelve, three, two, three, B two. As staff pointed out, and I just put back in the record here, forty-eight of these fifty parcels are less than ten acres in size in the blue here. Many people, uh, living in rural Bonner County, uh, have no choice but going to the USDA for home funding and loan funding. And I, I want to bring this up because the definition of rural character is limitedly defined anywhere. It's, uh, often just a subject of interpretation except by the USDA. Which specifically defines rural and character. And in their qualifications for loans, which many people living in rural Bonner County rely on. It states that an area is automatically considered to be rural in character when the population density is less than or equal to one thousand persons per square mile. You know, rural and character, uh. You know, what is it, right? You know, many of you know this famous line from our Supreme Court. I know it when I see it. Well, I mean, it means something different to everyone. If you brought my great, great, great grandfather into this room. And asked him if Bonner County was rural in character, he'd laugh, right? And my great, great grandchildren, if you brought them into this room in fifty years, a hundred years. They would think it's probably pretty rural. So it's, it's subjective. But it's really not because USDA talks about it and defines it. In their home, in their loan applications, they specifically talk about site size. There's no specific limitations of size or acreage on the site. And they simply state that you need to explain how the subject property compares to others in the area. In this case, we pointed out and made part of the record that many other homes and parcels in the area are less than ten acres. Further, Idaho Code currently allows for qualifying agricultural land to be exempt from certain taxation values. This is from the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan, but it's also Idaho Code. In order to qualify for such exemptions, land must be five acres or more. So five acres qualifies land in Idaho. For agricultural exemptions. When we look at Idaho Code, further, there's other sections that speak to the size of a parcel. In terms of what's its minimum for definition of agriculture. Idaho Code fifty thirteen, oh, one, seventeen speaks of the subdivision process. And it, as is highlighted here, it speaks to a bona fide division or a partition of agricultural land for agricultural persons shall be. Mean the division of land into lots, all of which are five acres or larger. But five acres seems to be a pretty clear cutoff for the definition of agricultural land. Right? You know, it's, it's up to debate and as I mentioned, it's subjective. In fact, I'd point to your own comprehensive plan here. Back in two thousand and five, members of the agricultural community. Uh, provided testimony stating that they had concerns that the ten acre minimum was too small for viable agricultural pursuits. So ten's too small. And also, uh, during that same process, they urged the people.
Please respect his time. You'll get your time.
To increase the minimum acreage for agriculture areas to twenty acres. Ten acres are too small, they say. My point here is that, as I said, it's subjective. It's a moving pendulum. And as time proceeds and the world densifies and we have more people living on planet earth. What is viable as agricultural land is changing. In fact, there's a whole genre of books that I just took a quick excerpt of a few. Speaking about the viability of agricultural production on five acres and smaller properties. In fact, it's quite amazing how many resources there are. There are even business plans that. Show exactly how you can create profitable farms on five acres or less. To bring the point home, I, I used to live, uh, in the Sally Valley on Jacobson. This was my ten acre parcel, but we only used the green, the five acres, uh, for ag production. And as I, I showed you today, uh, I walked along Commissioner Bradshaw. So our new residents here, this is called roving. It comes from an animal. It's called a sheep. And you shear the sheep and then you process it into roving and then it gets turned into yarn. We put up about twenty of these bags of yarn every year on five acres. I Microsoft.
I'm not sure how we make that part of the record.
Yeah, so we, uh, so the, the board recognized that he held up two bags of, uh, sheep wool, sheep, sheep, whatever it is.
You know, so, some other things that I did on five acres. And I ask you all sincerely, is this rural character? Mucking stalls, moving the mower. Feeding baby goats and sheep, birding baby goats and sheep, heading horses. I've gained some weight since that last photo. Throwing hayballs, chickens. Sheep shearing, goat shearing. Pongos. Shoot my guns there, harvest and process, animals there, my kids pick apples there in an orchard. This is rural, almost anywhere. To suggest that a five acre parcel cannot be consistent with the rural pursuits of Bonner County. Is nothing but elitist to suggest that you have to be wealthy enough to own ten, twenty or thirty or a hundred acres. We need areas for our young people to have farms. Talking about the soils, most of the property here is, um, split between soil classification forty-five and twenty-three. Uh, you'll notice that twenty-three states prime farmland is irrigated. I also want to point out that per Bonner County, the comp plan. Uh, soy unit forty-five, Rafflin Bonner County Silk Lomes. It calls it prime farmland class three if irrigated. Class four is non-irrigated. Of course, there's no irrigation district here, public or private serving the parcel. Class four soils therefore are defined as soils that have very severe limitations that reduce the choice of plants or that require very careful management or vote. Without irrigation, these are class four soils. And examination of chapter three of the comp plan, section three, point two, shows class four or higher so- higher soils are not prime farmland. Further, table three, one speaks very specifically to this. That the following map units meet the requirements for prime farmland when irrigated and where the slope is less than six percent. This list does not constitute a recommendation for a particular land use. I just want to speak to, if you wanted to irrigate this and turn it into prime farmland, um. A friendly farmer provided some details on how they irrigate a hundred and twenty acres in Bonner County for production crops. They use fifty-four bluebird heads, seven gallons per minute each. Seven times fifty-two is three hundred and sixty-four gallons per minute. Six hours a day, so six hours times six hundred. Sixty minutes times three sixty-four, that's a hundred and thirty-one thousand gallons per day. They do this five days a week, six hundred and fifty-five thousand gallons of water per week. And they irrigate June through September, sixteen weeks totaling ten point five million gallons per year. To irrigate a hundred and twenty acres to provide crop land forage. Thirty-two homes, according to Panhandle Health and other Idaho D Q standards. Would use two hundred and fifty gallons per day per home. So two hundred and fifty gallons per day, right, times thirty-two homes. Times three hundred and sixty-five is two point nine million gallons of water use from this potential hypothetical development. Residential use uses seventy-two percent less water than agricultural use in this scenario. And I also want to point out in regards to soil, this is, uh, just one of many in Bonner County. This is over south of Sagel. Where we have higher density developments, um, on prime soil. So it's, it's certainly something that occurs in Bonner County. Talking about open space. Certainly part of the rural character. As you can see here, the vast majority of land surrounding the subject parcel is agricultural forestry, private land. Many blocks over twelve thousand contiguous acres are either permanently protected or owned by the federal government. We look at the actual parcel by parcel, uh, allocation in the vicinity of the subject parcel, you'll see that. There's, uh, a significant amount of publicly owned or conservation use of land to ensure that the rural character is preserved. In the last hearings, I was, you suggested I was cherry, cherry picking data. About the wells and wells are an important use and I think you should look at that. Did you ever see a subdivision come forward on this property? So this time I want to look at seven wells. Not just one that I pointed out before. So this well to the northeast has a production rate of fifty gallons per minute. Uh, this well also to the northeast, twenty gallons per minute. This well to the south, twenty gallons per minute. This well to the south, twenty gallons per minute. This well to the south, twenty-five gallons per minute. This well to the north, a hundred gallons per minute. And this well to the northeast, fifty gallons per minute. Now I've worked throughout the West. I understand wells are wearable and inconsistent. Resource. So I just point out that based on the knowledge today, there, there appears to be. Uh, a number of wells in the vicinity that would show sufficient water for this development. Want to talk a little bit about traffic and agency comments. The subject parcel is located centrally within southwest Bonner County. About a fifteen minute commute, East River. And about a twenty-five to thirty-five minute commute to Sandpoint, Hayden. According to, uh, the two thousand and seventeen National Household Travel Survey. Uh, daily trips per household are about five point one, one. So what we're really here talking about today is the divine right to do sixteen lots under the current zoning, which would result in about eighty-one trips. Or the zoning is approved and a subdivision subsequently approved, talking about thirty-two lots. A hundred and sixty-three trips per day. So about an eighty-two trip per day difference. And if you distribute that over twelve hours, you know, it's about six point eight trips per hour. Uh, traffic increase that you'll see out on Spirit Lake Cut Off. Um, some people didn't like this data. Last time I brought it up, it's the best I can find. Spirit Lake Cut Off, cross, crossroad, looks like there's about fifteen hundred trips per day. Um, so we're talking about an increase of eighty-two. Uh, again, this would all come forward at the subdivision analysis. You'd be looking at a five point four increase, percent increase in. Uh, average daily trips out there. You know, the fire chief brought up some sincere concerns about traffic crashes and incidents. But it's not clear to me how that relates. There wasn't a lot of data. He did say that there's been a ten percent increase in vehicle crashes, but. Um, I point out that if you have ten crashes last year and eleven this year, one crash would be a ten percent increase. So. There's not a lot of context there. Want to touch on Idaho fishing game. This portion of their letter, the large tracts of state of Idaho, Kinnick's National Forest and agricultural lands. Near the proposed application area, there will be, continue to be plentiful wildlife habitat in close proximity to any further development. And then finally, I just, I think we're all pretty aware, um, this is from a couple of hours ago. All homes for sale in Bonner County, seventy-three, not, not pending or contingent, meaning under contract. If you look at, uh. Those that, um. Are a million dollars or more, there's thirty-three of those. If you look at uh those that um are million dollars or more, there's thirty-three of those. Under a million dollars, there's forty homes in the whole county. I spoke to a business owner the other day, pretty large business, trying to hire fifty-five people in Bonner County. It's one business. If we want our government to work, we want our schools to have employees, if we want our hospitals to have employees, if we want our road and bridge to have employees, our fire, our EMS, we have to provide places for people to live. In closing, will the requested change destroy the rural character of the area? Uh commissioners, that's your decision. Uh prime agricultural soil, sure, if they're irrigated, but from what I saw, that's not in conflict with the comp plan. Approval would allow for future housing. And per the comp plan, Bonner County recognizes diverse housing needs are to be addressed to provide adequate shelter for all, regardless of age, income, or physical abilities. Land use, balance and integrate its land use policies and proposed land use map. And the components of comprehensive plan to encourage the community to grow. Your own comp plan talks about growth. We're not here to just put up the wall and the fence and say we're done. Your comp plan talks about growth, of course, it's natural. Tax revenue per acre will increase to address new service demands. Future subdivision process will address on and off-site concerns. The subject parcel is well suited for development in regards to retum, slope, and access. And finally, staff finds the request consistent with land features. Commissioners, I thank you for your time, and I thank the public for coming out. I believe in public process tremendously. Um, and I entertain any questions you have at this time.
Okay, gentlemen, you have any questions for?
I do, I do. Can you bring that satellite picture of the property back up?
Do you want to stop, Sheriff?
Cause I've heard about three times that it's not suitable for forest land. But when I look at the satellite picture, which you can bring up here in just a second, and y'all determine for me, it's unmistakable. What are all the really dark green fluffy things on there? If it's not suitable for forest, then those must not be trees, right?
Commissioner, Commissioner Bradshaw, to answer your question.
And I'm guessing they're probably.
Commissioner Bradshaw, to answer your question, um I did not state that uh the property was not suitable for forest production or forest land. Microsoft. Um, what I stated. And what I emphasized was, was what it would take to produce um uh forage and row crops in terms of irrigation. When we look at the agricultural uh composition of Bonner County and what we produce, if it's forest uh products, we are quite blessed with the amount of public land and large landowners that produce forage products. What we don't have right now is houses.
I understand that. I'm just trying to clarify why Jason said it twice and you said it once.
Understood, sir.
But I'm pretty sure those are trees and not just.
That's actually not what he said.
Watercolors.
They were equating it to ag forest designation.
Right.
Not actual forest.
Are you looking at the blue ones?
No, I'm looking at the forestry service square and then the light green one that's covered in trees.
Well, I don't think anybody's arguing that it can grow trees. It obviously was tree before it was well.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Jeremy, thank you. Okay, so I'll let you get out of that program first.
Do I stop, Sheriff?
Okay, is anybody else that wishes to speak? Uh we're going to open up for public comment. Um kind of the rules of public comment, everybody gets three minutes. Again, you can gift your time to another speaker if you know someone that wants to, wants or needs some extra time. Um, everyone needs to remain polite, as you have mostly done so far, which I thank you for. Um, because we want to make sure we hear everybody that wishes to speak. You're not required to speak. Um, try to refrain from repeating what other people say, uh if you can, unless you really feel like you need to punctuate it, that's fine as well. But it'll just, it'll make things flow a lot smoother. Um, and make sure when you do go up, that you state your name for the record. Uh, as we are recording these uh these hearings. And what we're going to do is something we started doing in the past year. We're going to just go row by row instead of sign and sheet. Um, so we'll start with the gentleman who just took a sip of water.
Before, this is Bill Wilson for the record. Um, I noticed that Mr. Samanko is here. And he is, he's counsel, and I don't know who he represents or what, but um um given that, I think typically we give attorneys who represent parties here a little deference more time. Would you, sir, would you like to go first or wait?
Well, we don't have a lot of attorneys here in Bonner County, so I'm just kidding. Go ahead, Norm. I'm just, uh, how much time do you think you need? You have guests? Okay, awesome, go get it. But you're an attorney, you're not really worried?
I try not to. Would it be possible for the staff to bring up that first map that was in your PowerPoint presentation? I think it was a zoning map that showed everything that was AF ten. That would be pretty handy.
Um, do you, yeah, do you want to do that for the site then instead?
Does that work for it?
It's the one that have the, it was, it's the one that's in the staff report that has the whole vicinity in the AF ten, and that has the subject property. It was the first map that.
Are you looking at this, at this slide right here?
Good afternoon, uh commissioners. My name is Norm Samanko. I'm with the law firm of Parsons, Bailey, and Latimer. Um, we're headquartered in Boise. I live in Boise and also in Corta Lane. Uh, grew up in this area, um graduated from Spirit Lake Elementary. I don't know that we ever used the Spirit Lake Cut Off Road or even knew if it even existed then, but um it's sure a thing now. Um, you may remember June twenty-fourth of last year, I was here representing the Pattersons and a few others in the area on a request for reconsideration. And things haven't really changed a whole lot since then, but I'm I'm back for the, at the request of the same folks. Um, and what I will tell you from my my legal experience of almost twenty-nine years, including quite a bit of land use law, uh plus five years, sitting in a seat like yours, making zoning decisions as a city councilman in Eagle, a couple of things. One is, I found it very difficult to make decisions by applying the comprehensive plan in the city of Eagle because it's kind of like the Declaration of Independence. It's very flowery and it says great things. But I'm trying to grab firm rules and tests that I can apply to the facts, and comp plan's kind of hard. So I tend to focus more on statutes and ordinances. And the ordinances are are really laws that have criteria in them. And when one of those applies, I I really grab onto it. And you've got those here. And the two that I'm going to focus on are twelve three twenty-two and twelve three twenty-three, which of course are your ag forestry district and rural district um ordinances. Um, the other thing I'd say is, if you were inclined to adopt the staff's um analysis uh in approving these two applications, uh when this goes up to the district court judge, the district court judge is going to be confronted with two, what I think are fatal legal flaws with that analysis. Number one is with regard to the word areas. The word areas is all over those two ordinances, the ag forestry district and the rural district. And it says in areas that have this, or areas that have this, then you could be ag forestry twenty or ten. You could be rural at a ten or five. It's replete all through those two statutes, areas, areas, areas. So what are areas? It's not in the code. The two things that are in the code that are interesting is uh site. Site is in the code. The site, I think here, everybody would agree, is the the blue on the graph on the left here. It's the subject property, that's the site. The definition in your code says a site is the area that is subject to land disturbance activities, right? It's the subject of the application. So that's, that's one thing you look at. The other is vicinity, right? And you have a vicinity, and that's defined in your code too. And the vicinity would, to me, be everything on the map, right? This is everything in the vicinity. So when you're talking about area, are you talking about one of those? Are you talking about the site? Or are you talking about the larger vicinity or something else? Well, as staff analyzed the question of what is the appropriate zone, this is the application for an amendment to the comp plan map, right? The staff looked at that, what area were they looking at? Cause this is areas that are this are okay for ag forest, areas that are this are okay for rural. So they're figuring out which of those uh better describes the area. What area were they looking at? Read the analysis in the staff report. The site, the site, the site, the site, the site. The site is this, the site is not this. The site is this, the site is not that. So they focused on the site as the area. Does it mean, which does it mean? And they concluded that it is more like ag forest, it should, or like rural, it should be in the rural, not ag forest. Then the very same code sections. Now we're going to decide, all right, it's in R. Is it R ten or is it R five? In areas that have this and this and this, R ten is appropriate. In areas that have this, R five is appropriate. Same, same language from the exact same code section, three two three. What's the area now? Is the area the site? No, the area is everything on the map. It's the continuous area. How can you apply, and this is what the issue would be in front of the courts. How can you apply two different definitions of the same term from the same statute to two different questions? To determine which zone it belongs in on the map, you say it's just the site that's the area. To determine if it's R ten or R five, you look at the bigger area. That's the definition of arbitrary. You can't do that. Pick a definition. If definition of area is the bigger area, then you might not be able to get to the zone map that makes it R. Maybe it's needs to stay AF. If it's the smaller area, then maybe going to the uh rural district makes sense. But when you get to the R ten or R five question, you're only looking at the parcel, the the site, the subject area to determine if there's existing five acre lots already. That's, that's problem number one. Problem number two, which is maybe more problematic, is the language in the code. What is the language in the code actually say? In the staff report, on page sixteen, it says for R five, if the site in question is in an area already developed at or near one dwelling for five acres, yada, yada, then it's okay to be five acres. And on page sixteen, there's even quotes around the language, which would suggest to me that that is a quote from somewhere. It's a quote from what the staff said, a couple of lines up. It's not a quote of the language from the ordinance. The ordinance doesn't say this. You have to rewrite the ordinance to interpret it the way that the staff did. What does it actually say? It says, R five in areas designated rural residential. So after the map is changed, what area is going to be designated rural residential? The whole thing? No, it's also AF ten. The only area designated rural residential will be the hundred and sixty acres. In that area, it says, R five in areas designated rural residential in the comprehensive plan that are already developed at or near one dwelling, meaning a per five acre density. That's what it says. It doesn't say what they say in the staff report. You cannot interpret this code to allow a five acre. It's either, if if the area is the broad area, if that's what area means, then it stays AF ten. If it's the smaller, the site, the subject area, then it can go AF, I mean, it can go R, but it's going to be R ten. Because R five only happens in areas designated rural residential. You're not looking at the bigger area. You're only looking at the one sixty. This is what we'll look at. It's not all this stuff being talked about in this room. It's not who likes this and who likes that. When it goes to the district court, when it's on a petition for judicial review, and by the way, if this application gets approved, you'll get to read all this writing, because it'll be in a request for reconsideration. Maybe I'm not making enough sense, but uh hopefully a written document will. But a judge will be looking at these two legal questions. And there may be others, but I'm just looking at what's in the ordinance. You can't use two different definitions of the same term for two different decisions. You just can't do that. That's arbitrary. And you can't read that R five language to say you're looking at the entire area. So that's what I have to share with you. Uh, I wish you luck on your decision, and I look forward to hearing the rest of the testimony. I'm happy to answer questions. Happy to answer Bill, uh talk to Bill later. Uh, and I called back on the other matter today. We can talk later.
That's right, stick around. Okay, thanks, Norm. Okay, now we'll start in the front row. The gentleman with the hoodie on, do you wish to speak? Okay, uh the gentleman with the hat next to him. No, ma'am, how about you?
I'll give mine to the Pattersons.
Okay. Um, who's next? I'm having a hard time seeing over there.
I'm passing Pattersons.
Okay, so there's six more minutes to the Pattersons, okay. Um, let's move back a row then. Is that, is that everybody in that row? Yeah. Let's move back a row on that end over there. Okay, and ma'am next to him. Pattersons, okay. Let's start making check marks here, okay? Okay.
I'd, I'd like to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Marsha Stevens, and obviously I live off this cutoff road. I understand that this is regarding the rezoning of this, and I'll leave it to the better minds to explain all that's in. Grabber this. My concern is from a practical nature, all of us obviously live in the area. And I can tell you from the data that was presented by the gentleman representing Mr. Dom, that that's not how it is on the Spirit Cut Off. That traffic is horrendous and it is very dangerous. I can't tell you how many times we've got, almost every day, someone running the ditch, someone spinning out, someone passing you at seventy miles an hour, blah, blah, blah. We all know that. My other biggest concern is regarding the fire department and specifically what happened last summer. When that fire, I was within moments of being evacuated. And I actually spoke to a fire, uh a woman, a fire people at the gas station one day, and she conveyed to me how difficult it is for them to respond. And the one time I inadvertently set off my fire alarm, and the fire department was dispatched. It took them forty-five minutes to get to my home. Thankfully, there was nothing wrong. It was, I burnt dinner. But it set off my fire alarm. It took them forty-five minutes to get to my home. The gentleman came by himself and said everybody else was on a call. So the fire department out of Spirit Lake is trying to service all of us. And God forbid, there is a major fire, they cannot respond. The other issue obviously is water and the aquifer. Yeah, we all got good wells, and yeah, we can all see those numbers. But with the drought that we're experiencing and the continued drop of the aquifer, some of my neighbors are scared to death that their wells are going to go dry. And to try to drill a well here is two to four years out, I hear. So from a practical standpoint, I get that there's going to have growth. You cannot stop growth. But it is how we manage that growth and how we deal with the infrastructure around that. I come from afar, where we went through the same thing, could it? Good is how we deal with it. And I'll tell you, every person in this room can tell you how dangerous this road is and how it's a secondary arterial, how dangerous this road is and how much traffic is flowing through there from out of area, out of state. Everybody wants to blame California. But it scares me to death sometimes to make a left into my driveway for fear of getting, of getting hit and killed. So I urge you, it's hard not to look at the future when we're just dealing with this. That the next step is going to be the impact of all this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, who's next in that row?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay, let's go to the second row.
I concur with the, with the previous speaker.
Okay, great. Thank you. Insert you.
I'm to Pattersons.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Christine Loeb. I live in Blanchard and, um, I have a lot of little side notes. I've been doing a lot of little reading and looking into different areas of this proposed plan. Couple of comments that I would like to make to Mr. Grim are five acres. I live on five acres and I couldn't see to have sheep and a cow and horses and much more than my ten chickens on top of that with cats and dogs. Just saying, you have the ability to have extra room to move tractors and store your feeds and all that stuff. So five acres is a small portion of land. It's my land. I got elbow space, not enough. The fire department, they said that they did not provide definitive data to you, sir. Um, when it was requested of Bonner County EMS station to have some information on the need for an EMS station in Blanchard, it was basically said that it wasn't, it wasn't useful, it wasn't use of our, good use of our time to provide this data and it was never provided to us. Um, I spoke with, or I tried to contact the Panhandle Health Environmental, uh, duh, excuse me, nervous here, department and to ask them why they were not giving a clear comment on how these septics and wells would affect the water in our area. And their exclamation was because there were no applications submitted for these things because it was just a rezone, that's why their, their, their comment was vague. We know that is going to be a development. We know that. Um, I spoke with Chantilly Higby at the DEQ and I tried to get some information on her and I was basically told the same thing, that there was not, in the information that was provided to them from the planning department, that the information was basically on a rezone. It had nothing, it had nothing describing the proposed development. So I feel that it's an inadequate, inadequate, um, uh, information that was provided to them to give an accurate decision or make a proper comment. Um, I spoke with Merritt Horstman at Fish and Game and you used a sentence out of his entire letter, Mr. Grim, and it will, it does affect wildlife. I live in Blanchard and I'm seeing the five acre parcels that are continuously being granted and subdivisions. Miss, one of Mr. Dom's already up off Hunter Road. I'm seeing, um, that the elk herds are diminishing. They're gone. I, and I, and they used to be right there. I have videos of them crossing the road on my way to work in the morning. And I have fellow friends who, where are the elk? Where, where are the elk? I work in a, in a, right there at the little store. Where are the elk? Where are the elk? And well, I haven't seen him either. Um, he also touched bases on the water, that it is a hypoaic water, so it's not on surface. And that was the other thing that the DEQ, um, Chantilly touched on. She said that she only touched, she only writes comments on surface water. So we're talking about water that's underground, under, under, under the surface in porous, porous soil. So I just ask that you guys please take into consideration these things and, and deny this proposal. Ten acres is, is sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Someone in the front row, right in front of Christine there. Who's that?
Great shirt.
Great shirt, wildcat.
Right next to me.
Oh, it's Matt. Okay.
Nevermind, it's Matt.
Matt, did you want to speak?
No way.
Okay. Uh, man, you with the skirt. Pattersons, okay. Okay, thank you. And Jim, Sam, okay.
I'm going to delay.
Um, now is actually a good time to speak because we're doing this row by row.
Okay.
And make sure you identify yourself.
My name is Jeff Kummer. Um, a couple of things that concern me is this, this concept of clustering. Does that mean that it has to be contiguous? Does it mean that there's any limit? I mean, it seems to me that in the definition of it, you're talking about keeping the open character, but once you start a cluster, then you can just grow it like a, I'm going to say it, like cancer. It's got to be a tumor because it's just going to keep growing and growing. But if you look at the state's loop where I live, there's a two acre acre. Does that mean I can have two acre lots in my cluster? So it, it concerns me that it, it's seems a little bit open to interpretations as the DOM representative mentioned to us. Um, I also have a question that I haven't heard. How old is the comp plan? Do we know? Oh, wait.
Yeah, oh, eight was when it was.
Oh, wait, a lot's changed in oh, eight. I've only been up here eight years. I, I moved to Rastrop first. I even didn't recognize Rastrop if you had been stepped back ten, fifteen years. But again, there's, there's growth out of control. I came from an area that was growth out of control. When, when I grew up, there was wildlife in my neighborhood. I could literally walk all the way up to lakes. You can't do that anymore. It's all residential. Um, so I, it concerns me that once we make this change and once we start this growth pattern, it, it won't be Bonner County that we know it today. And I know that you old timers would say it's already not Bonner of all time, as Rep. said, but it doesn't make it right to keep doing it. I moved back here for a reason and that reason's quickly going away sadly, very, very quickly. Um, I think that's really it. I, I, although I, I will have to say, to say, to talk about affordable housing in this context to me is, is yes. Um, that, that five acre lots aren't going to be affordable. But no one's going to buy those things. It's going to be more people from California and Washington. That's it for me.
Dave?
All right. Uh, Dave Bowman for the record, and I'm going to get three minutes from Ms. Sharp. So I'm going to leave the zone change alone because you can't get to the zone change unless you do the complaint amendment. And the complaint amendment application is a disaster. So let's just start where I do at every single hearing I come to or speak on in Zoom. Twelve dash two eleven. It applies not to the zone changes, but it applies to, to our complaint amendments. So I'm going to read from it. And this, this application does not, for starters, it's, it's incomplete because it doesn't address that and staff doesn't even mention it. A request for amendment to a textless title of a comprehensive plan or the zoning map must be accompanied by a written request that addresses why the amendment is necessary. Now, thanks to John Finney at the last hearing, we now know what necessary means, right? It's not identified, it's not defined in the code. So we go to Webster's. Webster says necessary. Definition one, absolutely needed, required as in food is necessary for life. Definition two, of an inevitable nature, inescapable, as in death is a necessary feature of the human condition. I don't think this application meets that. I think you'd have to, well, you'd have to be a fool to think it meets it. So the applicant didn't comply with it. Staff didn't even ask about it. Two, twelve, two eleven's not even mentioned anywhere in the staff report. And that alone, if you don't go any farther than that, is enough to deny this whole thing. And I'd like to ask our county attorney, maybe up on the speaking or right now, what's your take on the, on this necessary?
Yeah, we really don't, this isn't Q and A.
All right, okay, but I'd like an answer later.
Chat with you about that though. I know email back and forth. So either there or out here.
All right, so other than that, uh, maybe the best argument for denial was made by the applicant himself. So from the application, unlike a detailed zoning map, the comprehensive plan future land use map is intended to represent a watercolor or fuzzy layout of potential uses, land uses within Bonner County. The future land use map cannot possibly be applied at the same granular level as a zoning map, which is why an extensive narrative helps to describe the particular characteristics in any given designated area. So staff even said today, area is not a synonym for parcel. So applicant wants to take that land use map down to precisely the granular level to which he claims it is not intended to apply. Even when he compares it to the zoning map, he further makes the case for denial when he correctly states, correctly states, how the zoning description narratives apply to the characteristics in a given area, not a given parcel or parcels. Either the land use map or the zone map are intended to be granular, that's the applicant's word, to the point that every characteristic in a given land use description is expected to be found on every parcel. And I quote from the land use, uh, element of the comp plan. Since the map covers 1.1 million acres, the map is general in nature. It is recognized that some areas may have low moderate slopes or include transportation features that cannot be mapped on this scale. So it says clearly there that thirty percent slopes are not expected to be found in all areas, nor are the transportation features found in the description. So if they're not found in all areas, then how are you going to expect to be found on all parcels? I mean, it's elementary. So the fact that they're not found on the applicant's parcels is the entire basis for their application for an amendment. So I won't go on too much more. I'll just, throughout the application, uh, twelve dash three twenty-three is referred to as a reason to amend the comp plan. But the comp plan, the code is derived from the comp plan. So you can't go to the code and use that for a reason to change comp plan. Doesn't add up. So I won't go through those. I got a laundry list, but I'll leave it to other people. And, uh, yeah, that's all I got. So I recommend denial.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Cheryl, do you want to speak?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cheryl Kins for the record. Um, you mentioned that the two thousand five, some of the two thousand five uh, workshops and things for the comp plan. And on the comp plan amendment findings of fact and zone change findings of fact for this particular, uh, parcel today, there's some things that were on it that I highlighted. The site is mostly flat with very small slope area of slopes, area. Less than thirty percent grade. The soil types on the site are considered prime farmland or prime farmland if irrigated. He highlighted just one of those soils. There is no water to issue service on the site at this time. An individual well and septic would be required. The parcels are surrounded by ag forest land designated lands and zoning of agricultural forestry egg, agricultural forestry ten and ag forestry twenty. The site is missing almost every minute goes to this. The site is missing almost every criteria for its current land use designation of agricultural forestry. Okay. So I'm going to read a definition. Now that I said those particular features, I want you to listen to the definition and see if it'd work. This area may have, may have a range of road systems serving it and is generally served by individual sewer and water systems. These areas generally have prime agricultural land soils and soils of recognized state importance and active farm and ranch operations. You think that would fit? Okay, that is from the land use component, Bonner County Comprehensive Plan adopted by resolution of the Bonner County Board of Commissioners on December thirteenth, two thousand five. And in the matrix, it shows for, that was under prime ag forest land. The prime ag, agricultural forest land is designed to preserve, preserve the productive farm and ranch at land and timberland to promote its important economic and environmental contributions to the county preserve. So under prime ag forest, forest ag land, which is greater than twenty acres, greater than or equal to twenty acres, it has the greatest latitude in transportation or road systems. And I could go into that from public right of way paved to US Forest Service, Department of Lands or private roads. And zero to thirty percent grade, zero to thirty percent grade. Not this thing that they keep trying to say greater than thirty percent, which drove me crazy the first time I heard it. Um, and then the ten to twenty acres, so ten through nineteen point nine nine acres, not twenty, but ten to nineteen.
You wrap it up, Cheryl, unless someone wants to give Cheryl some time.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who?
Dave, she can have my three minutes.
Okay, great.
Okay. So.
Nine minute, we have six.
So in this matrix, the ten to twenty acres was greater than thirty percent. So what's happened now with the code is a big question because it's flipped from two thousand five till when it was codified supposedly in two thousand eight, which again, the code comes after the comprehensive plan. It was flipped because today we have, um, and this is under agricultural forestry district, which again, is the area, the whole area. A district is different than a parcel where we're just going in and getting one parcel and holding it up against this criteria. So, and this is, as we said, this was surrounded by, the parcels surrounding it are ag forest ten and twenty. Okay, so a, the agricultural forestry district, the purpose of the ag forest district is to preserve, protect and maintain. This is, um, Bonner County Revised Code twelve, three twenty-two that was quoted. Preserve, protect and maintain areas that are rural in character and the integrity of the forest woodland areas where viable agricultural pursuits can be feasible and to avoid fragmentation of forests and farms. Here's a piece, here's a piece, here's a piece, here's a piece. So the twenties now say, um, the use of this zone is appropriate in areas designated by the comprehensive plan as follows. Ag forest twenty in all areas designated as prime ag forest land in the comprehensive plan. There's ag forest twenties in this area. And I, I propose that this land would better accommodate the definition of ag forest twenty, especially if you went back to the two thousand five, which somehow got messed up when it came over to two thousand eight, than ag forest ten because it's flipped in here. So the ag forest twenty, so in all areas designated as prime ag forest land in the comprehensive plan. That's category number one. Category number two that they always hold it up against is the ag forest zone is also, also appropriate in areas designated ag forest land in the comprehensive plan that it, that also feature prime agricultural soils. It has prime agricultural soils and we want to preserve it, protect it and maintain it. Are characterized by agricultural or forestry uses. Areas where one or more, one or more of the following apply. Limited services characterized by slopes deeper than thirty percent. Again, it was zero to thirty in the two thousand five. Where access may be absent or limited to substandard road systems. It was supposed to have the greatest, uh, range of road systems. Or where large tracts of land may be devoted to ag forest production. I say this land fits that. Ag forest ten doesn't even mention the slope. Um, so it would fit that because it's flat. And, um, but it says that for. And, um, but it says that for ag forest tens, they do not feature prime agricultural soils. Uh, but where agriculture and forestry pursuits remain viable, they do. These areas may be within or adjacent to areas of city impact or where lands are afforded fire protection, which they are, access to standard roads and other services. So I would say it should be ag forest ten or twenty, I would say twenty. That's all I got to say. And we need to review our.
Thanks, Cheryl. Go ahead. Name of my name for the record, please.
Yeah, hello, thank you. I'm Don Holland, two hundred and drive standpoint. People of Bonner County, when our existing comprehensive plan and its zoning laws to mean something. The map can be treated like a facade or an illusion that is easily breached by a simple request, in this case, a rezone to increase density that benefits only the individual property owner. And is not reasonably designed to promote the general welfare of the community. A simple axiom, if you will, if you want certain projects for your land and by parcels that are zoned for that desire. And don't ask or expect your neighbors or community to compromise their borders in their community developed plans and codes to accommodate your individual desires. The test of whether this zone change is valid, and one of the tests is whether the zone change is in accordance with comprehensive plan. What did the court say about such matters? Well, a little summary of Dawson Enterprises, pardon me, Dawson Enterprises versus Belane County Idaho. It says this in summary, the most widely accepted test for validity are whether or not a rezone is in accordance with the comprehensive planning zone is whether or not it is reasonably designed to promote the general welfare or does it merely benefit individual property owners. I think the hoodoo community in Bonner County in general has spoken clearly that this application will not enhance the general welfare of this community and should be denied. What guidance does our complaint give us in the form of a narrative concerning the hoodoo valley? Well, chapter, uh, five dash four in preservation states, preservation is a unique natural and cultural feature in ecosystems that should be a foundation of the rural community's land use policies and recognition of its irreplaceable nature of this area. Designed standards to encourage preservation of open space as a means of keeping the rural character of the community should also be the center of Bonner County's land use codes. Um, replication today certainly does not promote, um, um, this idea through higher density. And the town must assure that there'll be more of an adequate development in our county with the existing comp plan and statutes that now exist. Observing development on the existing undeveloped parcels in our county would be challenge enough for us to keep our quality of life, the roads, the sewer, the water, the schools, et cetera. We close it again, this application has been through a thorough review by our respected, independent, unbiased, knowledgeable and hardworking P and C commissioners. So please respect their work and conclusions and deny this application request.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead. We'll come back to you.
Can I get the staff to put the zoning map on there and maybe zoom out just a touch? Uh, do the, the land use one. And so our subject property is right here.
Make sure you identify yourself.
Yep. Doug Gunnar, two thirty-one, Sagal Road. I'm gonna kind of wing it this time, remember I have something to read from here, I get pretty nervous in front of people, but I'm gonna wing it. You guys really don't care about the facts that we provide to you guys that come straight from the comprehensive plan and zoning. You don't weigh the public's concern at any of these public hearings because you have rubber stamped close to forty of them recently. So I'm just gonna do a visual approach for you guys on this, because what we say clearly goes in one ear and out the other. So I'm gonna do a visual approach and maybe you guys are a little more like me uh, than we think we are, because I'm a visual guy. I'm not real great with words and stuff, but if I see something, I get it a little bit better. So this here is the subject property. This is a huge swath of beautiful agricultural timber green land. That's a huge, huge swath of green, huge sea of green. What you guys, what these guys are wanting to do is put a blue ugly rectangle smack dab in the middle of that beautiful piece of property. So are you guys seeing that? So are you seeing this green that's here and was put here for a reason with many, many factors involved is why is that, is why that's green? And you just want to willy nilly throw in a ugly blue square, or excuse me, rectangle in the middle of that big green swath. Are you seeing that? Do you see what that's gonna look like? Can you visualize what that's gonna look like? What I see when I, when I, uh, look at that is if that blue thing does go there, that's spot zoning. There's two things that come to mind with me and spot zoning. First of all, it's illegal. Uh, there's no reason to do any spot zoning, especially, spot zoning, especially to this magnitude. And secondly, it is horrible planning. It is terrible planning. It's ugly planning. And shame on your planning department and your planning director for pushing this type of spot zone and ugly planning. So that is my visual take on this. If you have two eyeballs and an ounce of respect for the comp plan and an ounce of respect for the zoning code and an ounce of respect for the people sitting in this room, you have to see what I'm seeing here. You have to. And Connelly, I really hope you're getting this picture right now, because you are on the chopping block for this.
I'm, I'm not having that. That's my point of view, because there is a blue, it's about the blue light there.
I'm, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure I painted a good enough picture there.
Everybody listen, attacking us is pointless, you know, claiming, telling us that we have to have respect when you behave disrespectfully is really not getting your point across, so please try to refrain from that.
It's never too personal with a task, and I would consider that exactly what that was.
I mean, and it really doesn't help your case.
You can have three, three of my minutes if you have that.
Oh, I'm done, I better be done.
Okay, so let's go to right here.
George Garrett for the record.
Hi, George.
Hey. Um, I have written remarks and I hate speaking in public, but like you.
George, can you speak up?
Um, like you, I'm gonna go off script and I hope not to get emotional. We've talked about words and their definition. One word that comes to mind in this hearing is embarrassing. I think it's embarrassing for the planning department to mention critical habitat when you are working off a critical habitat map that's twenty years old. I think it's embarrassing that the county commissioners haven't insisted long ago that this map be updated so that you can actually have a document that makes sense. I think it's embarrassing for county commissioners who present themselves as freedom-loving and constitutional respecting commissioners to have given undemocratic and autocratic power to the planning director to make administrative land changes. It's unimaginable to me that commissioners like you would willingly give that power to an unelected bureaucrat. The fact that you've done that, I think, and it was perfectly illustrated yesterday at the Camp Bay meeting, where you said, oh, well, you know, we, we found a loophole. Well, and you closed it. Well, the question is, did, did you deliberately make that loophole? And is the only reason why you closed it because greedy people were taking advantage of it?
If you, if you listened to us yesterday, you would have heard that it was made back in twenty fifteen, prior to any of us being on, on the board.
It could have been changed long before.
Yeah, and, and really this has nothing to do with that?
I, I, I understand, but I just, this is an example of a, of a gigantic loophole that, that has been created, because you have given an unelected bureaucrat power to make administrative land. And until you change that, this is gonna be the kind of thing that we have to deal with.
I know, but it doesn't apply to this file, please. Listen, you're out of order and I'll toss you in a heartbeat if you don't knock it off.
You've done several iterations, this is not a discussion, and yet you're pointing to arguments.
What we're trying to do is keep people on task. Get the door.
Are you actually kicking me out?
I am actually kicking you out. So please keep your comments, there is no administrative variance going on here. This is a zone change and a comp plan change. So please try to keep it on topic. Um, the lady next to George.
I'm gonna pass my minutes to Doug Murray.
Okay. Doug Murray. Okay.
My name is Tyler Roth. Bear with me, I don't like standing up in front of people. I've not done stood in front of people, uh, for all of these meetings. But I want you to know, I live here on Chippendale. This road right here on Spirit Lake Cut Off, this may look straight, it is not straight. It goes up and down, up and down. When we pull out here, we have to wait and watch to make sure there's no cars coming up this hill and no cars coming up this hill before we can pull out. There is a memorial right here of a young family that was killed. I don't even know if anybody even knows that. Um, but I just, and, and this is my back door. We need to slow it down, keep it intense, it's fine. We're all tense, we're very happy with it. Thank you.
Um, who's next?
My name's Arlen Rodd, I also live off Chippendale. Um, Thoms representative made a, for me, a true and accurate statement that I'm one hundred percent agreement with. Whether they have tried to pick the water well. Need to say, were any of these, which is us, were they in your report? Uh, my well, not hundred, not fifty, not twenty, fourteen gallons a minute. Hopefully it'll stay that way. Um, you also showed us of your family on your ten acres, you're only using the five acres and the chickens and the goats and cow and hay and how you could go shoot on your, on your five acres. We get these city slickers come out and put five acres, I start shooting my gun. Tell me the sheriff's office not gonna get called. Yeah, it ain't gonna get called. Um, yeah, I think the fire department requested or recommended a second entrance egress. They put it in a nice road right in the middle of the property. Where's that second road gonna go for the entrance egress? Tell me they're not gonna tear that up for hundreds of thousands of dollars and put in a whole nother one. So where's the second one gonna go? That's it.
Okay, thank you. Who's next?
I'll pass.
Okay, do you want to pass your minutes to somebody or?
Andersons.
Okay. We have the twenty-four minutes plus the three they each get, so. Um, who's next?
But you don't have to use them all, just saying.
You want to give the Doug Murray, that seems to be the.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. And the next person on the other side of you?
I don't need your minutes. Rodney Wheeler, I live in the States Loop. Uh, Spirit Lake Cut Off is a mess and we, um, they showed up some statistics up there. That was two thousand seventeen. There weren't any roads near my road and I think I'm in the Chippendales, the ups and downs, yes, terrible. It needs to be looked at, and I don't know why we aren't looking at things like this before we let presenters and changes come to place. My other thing is, okay, we need a review of our county land use laws and zoning to broaden, broaden our housing needs and where Bonner County is going. But it's us that need to make the change, not one person. And I don't know why we can't get that through anybody's head, is that us as a community live there, work there. We can't let one person make this change and another person come in and make another change. What kind of hodgepodge are we gonna have? Nothing to be proud of. And I hate driving forty-one and going through bathroom and post, well, I cry. But it, you know, it's gonna happen, I'm sorry folks, life goes on, but we can do it right. The well, the well numbers that were presented, that, um, I don't know how many of you have monitoring on your wells and know what it does from day to day. But I'll tell you, I have numbers for my well, it's ten years old. And as of now, those numbers are completely different than they were that well went in. So you can't go by, yeah, this guy's got this much water, this guy has that much water that off of a piece of paper, because you don't know what today is or after this summer it's gonna be, or how many wells went dry in that neighborhood. Every year there's more. Um, I guess that's the main, main things I wanted to say. The, um, travel statistics, two thousand seventeen, keep that in mind. How much has changed in just five years, six years on that crazy road? All right, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Next, sir, sitting on the table, do you want to go, since you're sitting right there?
I didn't even sign in.
Yeah, that's okay. Make sure you identify your name for the record, if you would.
I live on Edmire Cut Off, run cattle and farm and I don't know, you say you're not supposed to attack anybody's character, but I don't know how you make a living and sell produce off of five acres and support a family. And I don't know why he bought this land and then wants a zone change. He bought it, then leave it as it was rather than getting zone changed so that a person can pocket more money. And there's just no logical reason for the traffic out in that area, like everybody says, is astronomical and it gets worse every summer. And I'm another one on the well, it's, I don't know, he didn't come and check out my well, because it's barely five gallons a minute. And I live right on the creek bottom. Worst time of my well, it provided enough for my piles, it wasn't for the creek. And that isn't actually a creek, it's a drainage ditch, it was man-made and dug, so. And as far as roads, there's another development closer to Spirit Lake. And they rebuilt the highway and put in turnbays and everything else. And he talks about the people need a place to live, and I agree with the other folks that the ones that live here in our small families, they're not gonna be able to afford those homes. Or is that why he wants to build five acre home sites and so he can drop the, the price of the land that he has to recoup? Um, and he talks about, we need places for people to, to live that, to accommodate our jobs and everything for the public service. And what about all these people just standing around now wanting money and you try to give them a job and they won't take it? They, they already have a place. They they already have a place to live and the government's paying them enough now that they don't have to go to work for flipping burgers for 16 bucks an hour. So.
It's up to 17.
I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, by the way, just to clarify, just don't make derogatory comments about anybody, but you can, you have, I have no issue with you rebutting anything anybody said, so feel free to rebut it. If you can rebut it, awesome, but just don't personal attacks that stuff, there's no business in that. Oh, you guys.
Yeah, we're not gonna do Doug and Marine till we take a break.
Okay, so why don't we do this? Why don't we take it? It's it's 319 and uh, let's take a, can you guys do it in five minutes?
Well, I don't know.
Okay, let's take a five minute break. No, we're on. Okay. Okay, it is uh, 3:30 and we are back in order. Um, we left off with you, ma'am, go ahead.
Just real quick, I had a comment earlier from Spirit Lake Cut Off. Um, I was gonna reiterate the one gentleman talked about how the housing and uh, to increase housing to to increase more employment. Well, uh, I think that probably the majority of the people that will be moving in are not on the workforce and where they're probably retired, so that that doesn't fly. And then the point about um, was it with the homes um, that are for sale, that was a 73 or was it 33 or whatever homes in Barter County, but it's winter and it's snowing and it's muddy and I've sold house and I've bought homes and you don't do a lot of that during the winter time. So late spring, early summer, that number is probably gonna double, triple for for sale. So when they say that there's only so many homes for sale, it's only because of the weather and the timeframe. Um, and then also when they talked about land that isn't agriculturally um, you know, acceptable or doesn't have the the soil, right soil. Being a person who does garden and farm, we bring in compost, we bring in soil, we, you know, there's things you bring in to to make that soil so that it is better. I've lived in Florida, I've lived in Maryland, I've lived in Nevada, and I've lived in Iceland. Everywhere that you farm or you garden, you have to do something to your soil. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Patty. Okay. Oh, gosh, Doug, I hope you guys have enough content. I hope you have enough content. Uh, let's see, um, let's go here. You want to speak? Do you want to speak? Nick and Spina.
We need to get his verdict address.
Patterson's, okay. Hey, Doug, you have four hours. No, I'm just kidding. You want to speak? Okay. No, not yet. Go ahead, you, Summer, Summer, right? Oh, I don't know. You already made a move. Swang.
My name is Virginia Branham. I've lived off the Spirit Lake Cut Off road for 46 years. I've taken it from Durgo to the Sinet Road. It is a very, very dangerous road. Um, there's no way around it. It is not straight and it is dipped. Secondly, from the, so I think are in, and there are no um, shoulders, which is another problem. If you have to stop your car for any reason, it is a real hazard. The other thing, five weeks ago, my outside from the burn, it took the fire department 45 minutes to get there because they had to come from restroom. We have a serious infrastructure problem and you need to address that before you increase the amount of people living out there. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, now, Summer. Doug's not at all.
Um, my name's Summer Cantrell. I was just gonna say that we, I think most of us in here know that we're not just fighting this development. Um, Dom already owns more property. Is it him 40 acres behind you guys or 60 or something? So if this passes because there's already other five acres in the area, I would just assume any development that goes out there is gonna be turned to five acres. Um, and I mean, that would be, you guys would be gaining eight neighbors. Um, so we're not just fighting this development. The um, it was talked about how roads and traffic are good. Um, it takes 35 minutes to get to Sandpoint. That's right now. We keep adding developments and five acre plots and moving people up here, that's gonna increase. Um, traffic is already horrible. Um, and affordable housing thing. Yeah, that's that's, these houses aren't gonna be affordable at all. Um, you're saying that will be more people in the area um, for employment, et cetera, but I feel like we're already in this mess because um, of all the people that have moved here. Um, um, we have an increase of people and not enough employees and the housing market is through the roof. I mean, we're probably equivalent to California right now. Um, and just because everyone is talking Idaho doesn't mean you need to accommodate all of them. Um, when does the growth stop? Um, you talked about balance. I would say keeping it 10 acres is a balance. I'm pretty sure none of us even want the 10 acres to be developed, but it's a compromise. And Dom did buy the land knowing he was buying 10 acres. So why does he need to come in and rezone it? Um, I'm also trying to figure out why there's about four or five people that want this to be pushed through so bad. We have been fighting this for a year. We have a lawyer. We've all been diligent, we've done our homework, we've researched, we've called people, we've talked to people. So you have all of us, you have the fire department who's spoken against it, planning and zoning. And yet there's just a few people who keep fighting us on this. Um, so I'm just asking that you guys compromise with us, please, because we've been fighting this so much and please keep it at 10 acres.
Okay, thanks, Summer. Uh, let's see, she already went to Asia.
So Asia Williams Blanchard, Idaho. I wanted to first explain what the P and Z found because it was very similar to the attorney, that it's actually most appropriate just to be um, tens, not fives at all. And so Commissioner do this move to recommend denial to the Board of Commissioners and the rationale was it is inconsistent with the existing comprehensive plan. The proposal would conflict with the continuity of the comp plan designated substantially in the area under the present comp plan. It's inconsistent with land use component of Barter County comp plan and conclusion is not in accord with the rural residential land use. So that was the reason that they said no, and that was a very heated P and Z. And the other issue was that there was a question of how did staff change from yes to or no to yes without any actual answer when the P and Z was asking them, how did you go from such a without any actual answer when the P and Z was asking them, how did you go from such a staunch no to a yes overnight? And then the staff showed just one line on their staff report that changed that didn't seem to impact the actual change of the yes or no verdict. And so one of the things that I find a hard time with is that the applicant's application mentions subdivision, but when the people talk about subdivision, they're told, well, that's not what we're doing. He brought that into the discussion by writing it in his application. And it's reasonable then, when you see the agencies talk about subdivisions and dividing, that you take that into consideration because using his language, this is the idea of future planning, not just what we're working on for this current application. Because he tells you he's going to subdivide. I also don't think that the staff is reasonable in ignoring the recommendation because the word splitting was used. Because nowhere did I see them go back to the agency and say, is that just a runoff on the word splitting? Because they actually gave very clear concerns in that memo. They said the area needs to have two points of access and egress. A traffic analysis would need to be conducted. There has been 10% increase in vehicle crashes. And one, I might be wrong, but I do believe that the commissioners approved a grant to address issues on Spirit Lake Cut Off not two weeks ago. And so it's not reasonable to say Spirit Lake Cut Off can handle that level of impact. And so the other issue that I have in the zone change here is when you look at the fishing games response, there is Hooten Creek that's going to be negatively impacted and they are very clear in talking about the fact that the water is under and not over. There was a concern about wells and there's always been a concern from Panhandle Health regarding the number of septic that we have along the Rathrum Aquifer and the negative impact. Panhandle or Fishing Game also talked about the quality of water would be negatively impacted with that level of growth. And all of those things matter. I heard commissioners talk about it's a property right to change. It's not. That's what you bought. You don't like what you bought, sell it and buy what you want where you can do those things. Because the goal of our plan is to encourage that ag development, not to discourage it. And if you do this zone change, you're doing exactly the opposite of what our comp plan says because it is the idea that you guys are supposed to be protecting. Because it is, it is accurate to say that with that whole green area turns to that one section of room, then you're gonna have staff and come through our map and say, wait, look, now we have this and it's contiguous. And then it will all keep happening over and over and over again. It is not affordable housing. That is disingenuous. I don't know any kind of hood housing that's gonna cost $800,000 for five acres. And so we don't want to pretend that that's what this is. This is not an affordable housing desire by this developer because that's what he's always selling at. And if you're at the P and Z hearing, one of the things that was brought up was that he is actually selling it at five acres now. Because he has every reason to believe that he's gonna get it from the commissioners. And that's a problem in our community to know that you're gonna get what you want before the decision has been made with as much as we've been coming through here.
So you've got, let's see.
Four and a half hours.
I don't need that much.
You want to take, you got 33 minutes. Unless you wanna split some of that with Doug.
Yeah, definitely Doug.
How much do you want? You want 15 minutes?
Just talk until you get tired.
We'll start the clock, you talk.
Okay, first, I sent pictures to the commissioners and the planning department to show the agriculture that is in the area. Right here, this is 160 acre plot hayfield that is not irrigated and produces lots of hay. Right over here, you have 640 acre horse farm. And then Chippendales 10 and 20. We have a whole mile north of the state forest. Here's Bedroll Forest, a quarter mile. That's what is adjacent to this property. So first off, I wanted to say that as the Board of Commissioners, finding a facts correctly found, this site has prime farmland soils. 75% of it is Rathrum, thank you. Rathrum, Bonner, Atchison, Loam, the best farming soils that exist in North Idaho. Secondly, under Title 12 Land Regulations, the purpose of the zoning laws under 12-111 is to encourage protection of prime ag forestry. And number two, to avoid undue concentration of population and overcrowding of land. This land previously was a well-maintained forest before Dom bought it and cut down the trees. The next point, Title 12 Land Use Regulation 12-215 states that the applicant shall submit, first of all, a statement that addresses compatibility with adjoining land uses. And like I said, north of it, one square mile of state forest, south of it, 10 to 20 acre parcels, quarter mile of US Forest Service, west 160 acre productive hayfield. I didn't see anywhere where in the staff report, they talked about this at all. So the staff report is seriously wrong at not mentioning these adjoining sites. Number two, the applicant should submit a statement that addresses the relationship of the proposed comp plan, ordinance 501, 11-18-2008. So I went to the planning website, clicked on the comprehensive plan there and then on agriculture. And what I found was, Idaho Code 67, 6508, agriculture requires the following component, an analysis of the agricultural base of the area, including agriculture lands, farming activities, and the role of agriculture and agricultural uses in the community. Where is this in the staff report? I saw no effort to even analyze this. And I asked him, when I sent the pictures, if you want to come out here, I'll show you where these are and we can take a tour, since you said there was no agriculture. I'd be more than willing to do that. And didn't hear a word. Then he said that he's missing, that in fact, the staff report says, missing almost every criteria, a few people have mentioned this, of agriculture. And when it talks about Agriculture Forest 20, all three of them match up. Prime agricultural soils characterized by agricultural or forestry uses. Areas where one of the more of the following apply. Large tracts of land may be devoted to ag forest production, like this 160 acres over there. All three of them apply. If you continue to read on through the comp plan, under the agricultural component goals, the county seeks to promote the retention of agricultural lands by implementing planning strategies that complement and support agriculture and farm-related, non-agricultural activities. Further on, page eight, under issues, as the population of Bonner County continues to rot, there'll be a greater need to protect the remaining finite amount of prime agricultural land. This agricultural land is currently being lost through non-farm development. Fractalization of agricultural land removes that land. Indirectly, it may force nearby farms out of production by traffic, by their complaints about dust, smells, sprays, noise, especially by causing a general rise in land values and higher property taxes. This is why Planning and Zoning stated in the reply to the Comp Plan Amendment. The proposal is not in accord with the following elements of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. They have 14 elements listed there. I'm gonna only speak to two of them. Under implementation, Bonner County seeks to promote the retention, this is from the comp plan, of agricultural lands by implementing planning strategies that facilitate agricultural productivity and agribusiness activities. And then under the land use, when I clicked on the website to land use, they have a project land use map and there's 10 land use designations noted in the matrix. And number eight is agriculture forest land. And then number nine is prime agricultural forest land. And I think Cheryl mentioned this also. Listen to this, these words. This describes this exactly. The prime agricultural forest land is designed to preserve the productive farm and ranch land and timberland to promote its importance economic and environmental contributions to the county. This area may have a range of road systems serving it and is generally served by individual sewer and water systems. These areas generally have prime agricultural land soils and soils of recognized state importance and active farm and ranch operations. Okay. This is why Planning and Zoning unanimously recommended a denial. Allowing this comp plan and zone change violates the comp plan and the zoning laws and undermines our farming community. I recommend a denial.
Doug Patterson for the record. Seems to have more time than I had originally expected. There's a few things that I would like to mention that aren't on my specific list. This has been mentioned about the roads. We have the sheriff, we have an average of four officers covering covering the entirety of Bonner County at any given time. So certainly we don't have the police capacity that you have in Sandpoint, for instance. The, another thing that I wanna mention is, you're talking, a briefly step away from the microphone. About 32 wells and septic tanks, right there. You're looking at a creek running across here, which is Hooten Creek. That creek is actually, as been mentioned by Larry, is not a creek. That was all scooped out early on from Claxton on down and it is essentially a glorified drainage ditch. It does, or at least did have bull trout at the mouth of it where it hits the lake. And they're trying to preserve that. The ground in this is highly porous. There's places on my property where I could not fill a hole that I dug for a fence post because the ground was so porous underneath my hose and I had that hundred gallon win it well, could not fill it up. The great flood that came down the canyon, this is part of that property, like the Rathrum Aquifer, where you have a river draining the lake going at nine miles per hour underground. This is the same structure in this soil. So those 32 wells can get over to that creek, or it wouldn't take but one. And that, you see almost no side creeks going into there. And that's because of the side creeks coming out of the mountains on both sides. Once they get out of the mountains, they go underground and they flow underground and feed that creek. About four weeks ago, we had a route, a period of serious, serious cold. That creek does not freeze and it does not freeze because the underground water feeding into it does not get that cold. And so though lots and lots of stuff was frozen really, really hard, all the local ducks and geese were going in there to get in that creek where it was flowing without ice on it virtually anywhere. So having mentioned those things, I will go over to my main points here, which, which are, another side note, we have a Planning and Zoning Commission with Planning and Zoning Commissioners whose duty it is to make a recommendation to the county commissioners for how to, how they should act on these various applications for zoning. There has been, their whole purpose of life is to make that recommendation. That report that they wrote you has barely been mentioned. Do any of you have a copy of their report?
Yeah, we have, it's it, we all do. It's in the file.
It's barely been mentioned and it recommends, it says that the, that the Planning and Zoning Department's recommendation is really wrong and that they recommend denial. And so I will go over some of the reasons why I think that they are correct. Incidentally, I'm the Chair of Hooten Valley Concerned Citizens. It's about 125 folks, maybe a little more by now. And there's quite a few of them out there. So, per land use designation 12-322, Ag Forest 20, designation is appropriate in areas that feature prime ag soils. It's already been a finding of fact that this area has prime ag soils. Are characterized by agricultural and forest use. You saw the pictures, you see even from there, that it is, it is being used for agriculture and forest. Areas where where access may be absent or limited to substandard road systems. Your own county folks rate that road as not up to state standard for a road that as it is designated. It has no shoulders. That alone would put it below standard. The undulations in it get very interested that night, particularly when we get foggy days like we had this morning. Let's see. So we have some substandard road system. And we also pointed out the wrecks that we've been having on there. So where large tracts may be devoted to ag forest production. Once more, the map. All of this is basically ignored in your department's recommendation to pass this. So so there are, those are four, the four needed things for something to be designated Ag Forest 20. And of those four, the one I didn't mention was characterized by smoke steeper than 30. And the steeper than 30 part, as you've already heard, is probably not proper, but doesn't have smoke steeper than 30. It requires one, it has three of those conditions are met, three. So incidentally, Ag Forest 10, also per 12-322, is all of its things required for Ag 20, less prime soil. So the only thing that, that would qualify this to be brought down from 20 to 10 is lack of prime soil, when it has prime soil. So the fact is that it is, it probably was wrongly downzoned to 10, Ag Forest 10. It should have probably stayed 20. Nonetheless, it's already at 20. Per 12-323, rule five designation is land inside that box already developed at or near the dwelling of five acre density. Or do not meet criteria for R10. This property failed by both criteria. While R10 might be appropriate, R5 clearly is not. So the Staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is therefore correct. That's what I have just said, is what they found in their meeting. The Staff reveal, on the other hand, says that this 160 acre is missing every criterion for Ag Forest 20, or 10 incidentally, designation. So the Staff conclusion is embarrassingly wrong, embarrassing to the county and embarrassing to the Staff itself. So if you and I have heard over the years, you say again and again how it's, you follow the law. The Planning and Zoning Law has been stated to you in terms of what this property should be zoned and it is abundantly clear that it should not be brought down to anything below 10 acres. In fact, In fact, it probably should be zoned up back to Twenty, but it's already at Ten, nobody's asking you to do that specifically, but the whole idea of bringing this down to five, that's absurd. So up zoning, if you do it, you are clearly voting against the law. Your constituents will act accordingly.
Let's go.
These two guys are trans here?
Yeah.
Making sure we're not gonna miss it.
Hello, my name is Dwayne Brown. Twenty years ago, when I moved up here in the Hootie Valley, I chose to bring my family out of the lousy town of Phoenix, Arizona, to a better life. When we moved up here, we looked all over for property, rural property that we could afford. My aunt and uncle lived exactly due rest of this development. He had Twenty acres. We came to the planning and zoning to see if we could buy five acres to build our house. They turned us down as soon as we walked through the door. Why isn't that not being done now? Now, as elected officials, we, the people, are asking you to turn this down. We don't want houses ten feet apart in our neighborhood. You live in our neighborhood. If it was in your neighborhood, would you want it? I actually consider to deny it.
Okay. Sure, let's go, let's start down, you already spoke, just move it around so you can talk more. Okay. Make sure you identify any of the records you would. You'll say, that's clever.
Tom Lewis. So we're introduced to a new word today by the staff, or at least as far as in these meetings, and that was clustering. You know, all these other meetings we've had regarding this, this clustering has never taken place, but, you know, I, I would rarely do this, but even as Commissioner Conley pointed out, you know, what is clustering and how does it apply to this? To me, clustering isn't five acre, or one house on a five acre lot. I mean, if we zoomed out to Sandpoint and saw Matta Sandpoint, that would be clustering, where you have multiple houses on an acre lot or less. So I don't think that clustering is really what this term should be for this. And then, as has been pointed out before, estate slough. You know, those are non-cladded properties, and yet we continually see it by planning and zoning pointing to that as precedent of why this should be allowed for five, because those are less than ten as it is. Yet, those are not platted. So it didn't come before the commission, didn't go to planning and zoning to get approved. That's the way it is, and yet that's what they're holding the hat on, that this is adjacent to it and equal to it. So now the Dom representative, which I have to be careful saying that, his reference to, I know it when I see it, I don't know if anyone you saw that, is, that was referencing a case dealing with pornography. And so this is something that they want to put their hat on, is that, well, no one may see it. And a lot of you were here in the first hearing that went through, at the commissioners, and the same representative was bashing the farmers and ranchers in the area because there wasn't any income that was produced out of this. And it was very offensive to me, along with many of the other people that were here that day. And now, now today, what is he showing us? He's showing us pictures of his kids and now the things that he's doing as a farmer's friend. It's interesting how we switch things around when they really, we want them to apply for what we're working with. So, you know, here he is, yeah, we can do all this stuff on five acres, although they have more than five acres that they're doing all that on. And as Maureen mentioned, you know, there's no obligation for us here as the citizens to provide housing for people that are coming in. You know, if we want to have growth, and there's going to be growth, there's no doubt that there's going to be growth. But it should be controlled growth, it should be planned growth, not out in a rural area where services are, emergency services are twenty to thirty minutes away, not where there's not traffic, I mean, there's traffic issues out there. I mean, put these more dense areas closer to cities. Closer to incorporated cities where there are those services, where it's easier for people to get in and get services, and that's where the places of employment are going to be if they have their houses in there. So that's pretty much everybody here in this hearing. I recommend that you deny this proposal.
Good afternoon, my name is Frank Geiser. I'm originally from Belgium, and I relocated here. So that tells you that we live in this beautiful, irreplaceable, really, somebody used that adjective of forestry, ag land. Really, this, this part of Bonner County is fantastically unique. I just want to, you know, add up to whatever I heard this afternoon saying this, this should be maintained at any costs, protect and preserve, you said so. And I, I don't have all the, the data that was given to you today. I just want to say, as, as a resident Bonner County, I really would like to see this project denied. The other thing I want to say also is that I live nearby Spirit Lake. An employee at Spirit Lake Post Office said to me the other day, Friday will be my last day, I'm leaving. And I said, why? Can't afford to live here. The house she is renting is for sale for half a million dollars. How can an employee at a postal, a post office in Spirit Lake can afford to buy a house in Spirit Lake for half a million dollars? It's unreal. So she is leaving the area, she's going out of state, and who is going to man the post office? When you and I will die one day, who will do this if we don't have affordable housing? So to a good developer, I'm saying the critical issue, the critical issue is the cost of housing. And if you can, if you can develop in a smart way so that you can afford, that you can make it affordable for young folks, the productive part of our population to stay here and maintain the level of employment and the services that we need. That's what I think the emphasis should be. So, thank you very much.
Dan, you want to speak?
Dan Rose for the record. The applicant stated and posted many definitions on the board, and I'm not sure how many of them are truly accurate, but I will suggest this. I stood before this committee, the Board of Commissioners on the SpaceX issue, and I described the definition of a communication tower. That fit the definition of a communication tower, and you all sat there and listened to planning and zoning described by a solar board, a solar panel board. I suggest you exercise some consistency. You denied us because the definition didn't, because the definition didn't fit your agenda, and I suggest you should deny this one for the same reason. Be consistent.
I was standing right here at a previous meeting. Commissioner Conley was standing right here, and there was a couple of individuals that were standing in this area.
Dan, can I ask you, does this have anything to do with this file?
Absolutely it does, Mr. Chairman. I wish you didn't interrupt.
Well, actually, as the chairman, if you know structure and you know Robert Tools of Order, I do have the ability to interrupt.
Yeah, you bully everybody with everyone. I get it, I get it, I get it.
Is to make sure that meeting flows and everything is talked about in here is relevant to the file.
So as I stood there and we discussed, Commissioner Conley was quite aware of the legal argument that was made in that group of four people that stated, when the commissioners and the Board of County Commissioners side with the Bible Council, or the Bible Board, in this case, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the chances of them being able to turn it in court are very slim. That's what was stated, you heard it, and I would suggest that the planning and zoning has given you the right decision, and you probably took listen to it. Fortunately, I believe, as I stated in my written testimony in this subject in the very beginning, that I sided with Norm Semenko's legal determination of what this is and where it should be. I pled an hour of time to the appeal, should he file one. And I asked everybody to follow up and put up an hour of time to that defense as well. Thank you.
Okay, please, yes. Who's next? You want to speak? Okay. Well, you already gave away your time. You know what? We've heard everyone else. Do you want to speak? No, per.
I did want to say something. My name is Barack Holder.
Wait, can I give you the mic? We see we record these meetings and the sound in here is not as good as.
I don't want to be on camera. I like a privacy.
No, sorry.
Out the door because of the time they're within, but a couple of statements made by the applicant's representative that a lot of people are using USDA for loans to have their farms. I don't think that is a clear representation. I can, there's numbers of people from this community that do a completely different style of farming, myself and my brother being one of them. He's not here today because his children and wife are sick. You do not require irrigation always for permaculture farming, horticulture farming, and it's not really an accurate representation to say that something is not agriculture if it doesn't have irrigation pipes everywhere. If you know anything about the farming practices from pretty much thousands of years ago, herbal mounds, composting, permaculture gardening, it forms a way of placing water under the soil as it's growing. You don't have to have irrigation. So I think that point really is moot in saying that it's not agriculture if it doesn't have irrigation. Another thing, I don't know this, don't know the, the actual verdict, but to claim agriculture, it doesn't require just five acres. You have to have one acre for your residence. And to be able to follow agriculture without going through a bunch of hoops and money, you have to have clear five acres that are untouched by that one acre for your residence. So to say that the five acres is going to be better, for I know a lot of people coming to this area want to do the type of farming I'm talking about. They would like to have ten acre parcels, and they would buy the ten acre parcels. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So there is any, for anyone that hasn't spoken that wants to speak, that didn't give away their time. Oh, the people online?
Okay.
Wayne, can you hear me? Hello, Wayne.
There it goes. Thank you, commissioners. My name is Wayne Martin. I live out in Hootie Valley. I'd like part of Maureen's sixteen minutes and twenty-five seconds that were left after Doug finished. Anyways, I do want you folks to be aware, currently, we have fog out here. I know Spirit Lake is going to be even more treacherous for traffic. You're going to have, currently you have Chippendale that people make left turns from Spirit Lake onto Chippendale, and in a very short distance, you are going to add another left turn situation if you allow this project to go through. I think most of the people will accept ten acres. I know the developer doesn't want it because he makes more money out of five acre lots than ten. You folks do have the opportunity to make those decisions. I have a question for Mr. Conley and the rest of the commissioners. Mr. Conley usually answers my questions. Do you folks believe in global warming? Do you know that the increase in vehicle traffic is going to increase pollution? And with the loss of forests and all, it's going to have an increase or in pollutants that are around because there are no, or we've reduced the trees that are around. The wells, the wells, all the reports are old. Jeremy brought up eighty-five, ninety-four, ninety-one, and that was when it was done. That's not what the wells currently put out, and then you want to add thirty-two new wells. The subcommittee recommendations were to change things, and that still has not been done. I brought that up last time, asking Milton, what's going on and what and when will that be, you know, addressed? You know, housing increase, I know that it was mentioned with them that the housing increase should be starting from the cities and moving outward, not being out in the other. Bradshaw stated in the past about the estate loops area. Just because that was permitted in the past does not mean that you three commissioners should permit that mistake that was made in the past to continue. I'm trying, trying to watch my time. You know, Dom sat there, came in and harvested the trees under the property. He bought it, he has the right to do it, but before it went, before the planning department, the, definitely before it went to the planning and zoning commission and to you folks, he went in and he bulldozed the property and put in a road down the middle of it. I am requesting that you folks look at it and vote no. At best, you make it a ten acre lot. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Wayne. Well, let's see, Jonah. Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Go ahead, Jonah.
Thank you. Norm Semenko, the attorney representing people in this group, has given good reason why this is against the revised code, and I hope you're listening. The Bonner County.
I need you to identify yourself first for the record, if you would, please.
Donna Plant Segal.
Thank you. Now go ahead. Give her that time back for you.
Go ahead, Jonathan. Sorry, Norm, the attorney representing people in the group, has given good reason why this is against the revised code, and I hope you're listening. The Bonner County community is tired of having to pay double when you make decisions against the revised code. When you make the decisions not based on land use laws and Idaho state law, we, the taxpayers, pay double. How is it double? Well, we pay attorneys like Gary Allen, Preston Carter, or Norm Semenko to attempt to overturn decisions made not following our own laws. And then we also have to pay Bill Wilson from our taxes to defend your wrong decisions. We are tired of this happening and hope if you decide to listen to Norm with his expertise over Bill Wilson. Per our own Bonner County revised code, we need to go to section twelve, section two point one, subsection two point one, and the name of the chapter is Title Amendments, Comprehensive Plan Amendments and Zone Changes. Purpose of two point one, this chapter provides procedures of amending this title. Twelve two one one, a request for amendment to the text of the title, the comprehensive plan or the zoning map must be accompanied by a written request that addresses, A, why the minutes necessary. I have not seen anything on the application anywhere why the app has shown any necessity. And then we go to C, the effective proposal on adjacent property. Obviously, adjacent property owners say it will negatively affect them. Are you going to override the wants of the neighbors and then community who has to deal with the changes if this is approved and ignore the majority over the minority being the landowner? The fact the Spirit Lake Fire Department Chief explains the infrastructure is not ready for those changes and their deficiency should cause you to vote no. And then also, I wanted to say, what about spot zoning? In the case of Dawson versus Blaine County, spot zoning is discussed, and Supreme Court has used this case for its decisions and opinions. This case is clearly type two spot zoning described in this way. Type two spot zoning refers to the zone change that singles out a parcel of land for use inconsistent with the permitted use in the rest of the zoning district for the benefits of an individual property owner. The latter type is invalid. Again, this is exactly spot zoning. When will you follow the Bonner County revised code? When will you follow the Bonner County revised code, the Idaho State statute, and the will of the people? This is not mob rule as Dan McDonald describes in social media. It's called the majority, and it's the basis of how we elect people, decide laws, and how communities decide planning. So, uh, please, let's not force the community, sue the county, costing the taxpayer doubles. And just because something is wanted or even would, is needed, or if housing's needed, it's not, it's not according to our codes. We have to follow our own codes and not just go what people want. And, um, last, uh, please follow the law. Thank you.
Okay, Jonna. Maybe else online that wants to speak doesn't look like it. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move into rebuttal. Who wants to go first? Jeremy?
I'm sorry. There was some, something that needed to be read into the record that doesn't need to be given to. Uh, Milton said he would read the resolution from our grain into the record, and then also there is a letter from the, uh, master of the grain.
Uh, we got the letter from the master of the grain.
But it needs to be read into the record.
Would you like me to do that?
Go ahead. I haven't heard from you today, Milton. I would love to hear from you.
Especially this sister.
You will be great.
Thank you. Your Commissioners, as I was at last month's hearing.
Milton?
Do you want me to go to the microphone?
Yes.
Put the camera on.
You have to say your name and do a little dance.
Thank you, and thank you, Maureen, for reminding. This is a letter from David W. Turbest. I am Milton Hallerton, Planning Director, reading this letter from David W. Turbest into the record. Dear Commissioners, as I was at last month's hearing, that could not take place due to notice requirement, I've sent the resolution from Edgemore Grange to Milton to be read into this week's minutes. As the president of the Grange, we are total of forty-five families and have some, and have supported most of the country issues for the past seventy-two years. However, we must now object to the FRO County Commissioners to ignore good land use planning laws on our own general plan. We do not agree that the parcels in the project should be reduced to less than ten acres, and we will stand with the community residents in opposing this project, even if that means legal means. You all know that with my history as a large county commissioner in another state, we know that we are right on the land use zone must be applied to this project. We may not even agree that ten acres is appropriate, but that is the main one we look at. If you choose to ignore the will of the people and zoning laws, we will proceed with remedies that are available to us. Thank you for your time. Uh, David W. Turbest, uh, ten acre minimum for agricultural zoning, Grange Resolution. Whereas Edgemore Grange means it necessary for the purpose of promoting the public health, safety, stable, and sustainable agricultural practices and general welfare of Bonner County to enact such a resolution. And whereas the Edgemore Grange recommends that ten acres be the minimum set for agricultural zoning and appropriate regulations to be enforced there, and whereas less than ten acres is approaching on the rights of others in agricultural zones, which is viable and important, particularly in the Edgemore area. And whereas ten acres is the minimum for meaningful agricultural practices in these agricultural zones. And whereas ten acres is the minimum for meaningful forestry practices in these agricultural forestry zones. And whereas the agricultural zone area should not be rezoned where these exist. And whereas aquifers and agricultural areas need to be preserved, especially when subterranean creeks feed into surface creeks. And whereas less than ten acres creates possible pollution due to increased septic loads and increased demands on the aquifer. And therefore, be resolved that Edgemore Grange strongly encourages a ten acre minimum in agricultural zones and agricultural forestry zones. We should not be allowed to change zoning and stands in support of preserving our prime rural community in Bonner County. It was signed by Dave Turbest, President, April eighth, twenty twenty-one, also signed by Gary Donkey, Secretary.
Okay. Is there another resolution we need to do?
Don't you pay.
Everybody's standing.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. You right?
Due process.
There was a way of scanning, actually.
I didn't see it.
Someone on the line, there's an angle of order.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you already did.
Yeah, I already did. Yeah, we're in rebuttal.
Steve, they probably don't know how to use the system since it's kind of complicated.
Yeah, we already closed. Okay. Uh, Commissioners, thanks. Public thanks for speaking out, your passionate, um, perspectives on all this. I mean, when I say I love the public process, this is what America's about. You know, America's also about due process, and, uh, Mr. Don, my client, has the right to ask for this. You know, he didn't buy it thinking it was a shoe-in. He has the right to ask for this. The code provides for that right, and this is the process that, uh, our elected officials get to work through to determine in their interpretation if, uh, this, uh, request for a, uh, comp plan amendment and zone change is appropriate. Um, there was a few things I'm going to rebut here. It may take me a couple of minutes, so bear with me. I'll start in order. Um, you know, um, in terms of Mr. Semenko's comments, um, I think there is probably aware that the county council, uh, and Commissioners are aware, and, and Mr. Semenko is probably aware, that the courts great give and grant great deference to you as county Commissioners, uh, on your interpretation of your code. Um, it's very rare that a court will try to interpret your zoning and your code. Um, it seems quite clear to me, the staff report is clear when they're talking about area and areas, and the record is quite clear, uh, with the various exhibits and references of what we've been talking about here. Um, you know, there was a comment about me, uh, a year ago, talking about the concern and, um, the reality of farming in our community in, in Bonner County, and that I didn't mention that this time, I would the other. Absolutely, I am with that, but I'll also reference that Mr. Semenko, in his last time he was before us, was talking about this question of contiguous, and, and now it was going to pivot to, oh, no, it's not about contiguous, it's about area. Um, so, you know, just recognize that as I presented in the record, there is a definition for contiguous in Idaho code. Moving on to, uh, the next one, I wanted to mention, um, Ms. Stevens, Marsha Stevens, you know, mentioning traffic, fire, and water, these are all super valid concerns that all of you have, and, uh, the Commissioners should have concerns about that as well. Uh, however, uh, those are all, uh, elements of a subdivision application. When you apply for subdivision, the county can ask for studies on traffic, they can ask for mitigation on traffic, they can ask for contributions from the developer to address deficiencies. So, great points, but we're not there yet. The first step is to address the comp plan and the zoning, which every, uh, landowner in Bonner County has the right to ask for, uh, a revision too. Um, getting back, uh, uh, Ms. Low mentioned the elk, um, the loss of elk. I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but Idaho Fish and Game, I'm a hunter, uh, recently changed their, uh, cow, bull, elk hunting regulations in this region, in this unit, and you can now shoot elk within a mile of cultivated grounds, uh, cow elk. So, uh, it would appear that Idaho Fish and Game is actually trying to reduce the number of elk in these areas. If you're not aware, just bring it to your attention. Um, Jeff Flummer, um, I, I cannot mention affordable housing. This gets brought up a number of times. I did not use the word affordable. Um, that's, I had no idea what product, um, Mr. Don is going to build, whether or not this change on these properties. Um, you know, Mr. Berman, um, Dave Berman mentioned, uh, some questions about necessity. I, I would put forth that it's pretty self-evident and apparent that the necessity is to zone this into smaller lots.
Necessary.
So, um, that's why I would propose that it's necessary, and it's really covered in the general application and narrative. Um, moving on to, um, Mr. Harms, uh, great points. Um, when we talk about the general welfare, though, I think, uh, as our, our new, uh, neighbor from Belgium pointed out, there's a great example. Who will staff the hospital? Kootenay Health has a worth-talison applications for open positions. When we need an appointment at the hospital or anywhere else, or your kids need to be taught, or you read your mail, or you read a forty-five minute fire response, we need housing for people to live, to service us as, as a community. So I put forth that it is in the general welfare of our community to, uh, build more houses in Bonner County. Um, uh, Mr. Grant there mentioned ugly blue, um, dots, and I'm not sure if I can zoom in. It was actually rectangles, not dots. Oh, yes. Um, like, you know, everything south of the subject pro- property, um, Chippendale, if you care at some point to just look and zoom in at some time on your own and look at the land use that's occurring on those parcels, um, you know, just because somebody has five acre parcels, I've been to some amazing organic and other farms on five acre parcels, as I pointed out. So I don't characterize this as ugly. People, these are people who want to move to Bonner County, and our county needs, uh, workers to fill the, the hundreds and hundreds of open jobs in our community. Um, moving on, um, George mentioned, you know, the critical habitat, um, yeah, I'm all for, and I think everyone's for revising our, our, uh, long-range plans and making them as accurate as possible. But again, I want to emphasize that my client does have a due process and a right to ask here. Um, I want to mention the second request. Um, I just want to address that because those, those questions come again at the subdivision phase of this process. Um, as well, um, Ms. Wheeler there mentioned that the wells, um, could be different from what I presented, and again, that's, uh, with authority, the Commissioners have to ask for that kind of detail. In Kootenay County, you have to do a hydrology report when you do a subdivision to show that the wells in the area can support additional wells. So again, that comes at a future, future process. As well, uh, Virginia Brann, who's lived here for forty-six years, um, those concerns about the road, again, are addressed during the subdivision process. Um, Summer mentioned, um, affordable housing. I just emphasized I didn't, didn't mention that. Um, uh, Ms. Williams, um, uh, mentioned, uh, something about affordable housing. I just reiterated, I didn't mention that. Um, you know, touching on the Petersons, they, their, their concerns seem to be. Yeah. Pattersons, thank you. Seem to be, uh, water, uh, plants, or some inconsistency with, with, with the comp plan. Well, um, I, I revert to what I stated and is in the record, table three-one, chapter three-two of Natural Resources, when it talks about the different types of soils, and it specifically says, this list does not constitute a recommendation for particular land use. Um, so I want to emphasize that. Um, you know, prime ag soils, if you look at that description, it's irrigated. Um, and then moving on. Um, Mr. Brannam, respect your perspective for the people, but the owner also has a right to ask, uh, for this to be rezoned. It doesn't have to be granted, but he has the right to ask. Um, and then moving on. You know, um, Mr. Lewis mentioned, um, you know, this rural character, and I then, again, revert back to, um, the definition from the USDA of rural in character of less than a thousand people per square mile. Um, uh, Ms. Williams, um, he, he spoke to, um, basically the Planning Commission's decision, and, and I really want to emphasize this, if this goes to District Court, I don't think that's something that's, uh, I mean, should be fearful of in the sense that District Courts typically remand it just back to the Commissioners for clarification of their decision-making. But in that, if you hang your hat on that Planning Commission, uh, decision, and you look at that record, you will see that they're clearly biased because before the Planning Commission, uh, public hearing even began, uh, the questions were, um, clearly directed towards a bias towards denial before they even heard the testimony that I provided. Um, and moving on, I think I'm the last, to the last one. Uh, Ms. Plant, um, yeah, nothing I'm going to rebut there. So in closing, Commissioners, um, like always, you, you have, uh, the, uh, the latitude to interpret your comp plan and your code, and, uh, in this case, we respectfully request, uh, that, uh, you overturn the Planning Commission's decision and grant this, uh, request for a, um, comp plan, map amendment, and a zone change. Okay, thank you. Jason? And Jason, I'm going to, where you're heading up there, think about this, um, Maureen brought up this compatibility with adjacent land uses issue. If you could speak to that.
So as far as compatibility with adjacent land uses go, I think I've already shown that.
All right, we can just repeat.
I mean, you've got the area under consideration here. Can we share a screen sharing? No, we are not. We're going to reshare the screen here.
And I, and the only reason I'm asking to repeat it, because I heard it the first time, but it didn't sound like Maureen heard it, so I want to make sure it's clear.
You're in the yellow is the area under consideration, and the area in blue is an adjacent area. So, ten acre zoning.
If you can elaborate a little more, have I?
I mean, I, I can't make it any more clear.
I know.
But it's, that they are adjacent, and that's, that's, there you go.
In the, in the application, there's a table providing, that the applicant identifies what, what the, what the zoning is, what the comp plan is, and what the uses are around the property.
Mm-hmm. Right. And that was evaluated. Um, so some things I've heard come up, uh, every, every hearing with a, with a comp plan amendment and a zone change, someone says spot zoning. There is no such thing as spot comp plan amendment. Doesn't exist. If the zoning matches the comp plan, it's not spot zoning. Now, if it doesn't match, yeah, it's a spot zone, but there's no such thing as spot comp plan designation. Um, uh, complaint that the entire development proposal isn't known. I mean, of course, it isn't. It's a rezone. There's not a complete development proposal. There's no way we could know the future. Um, I believe, uh, previous speaker spoke about two, um, uh, some comments about, uh, this should be denied because it affects wildlife. If that's the criteria, I would challenge anyone to show me any development that doesn't affect some wildlife in some way. If that's the criteria, then I guess we need a development moratorium in the county. Commentary on the necessary part of the code, uh, that comes up a lot. Necessary is not an evaluation criteria. That's in twelve dash two-on-six, Evaluation of Amendment Proposals. The word necessary isn't in there. Um, as far as wells go, Idaho Department of Water Resources evaluates wells, not planning. It's kind of a request to replicate state services at the county level. Um, one thing that came up, um, multiple times, and, and this, this happened at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting too. Um, there were multiple readings of zoning definitions and land use designation definitions that were not under consideration in this decision. Um, so, uh, the, it's, it's like they kind of, it's like some folks kind of respect planning to take an application, ignore it, rewrite the application, we would prefer and evaluate that one instead. A request for a rezone is not an open-ended request where you come in, pay twelve hundred dollars, and then planning does a broad scope analysis of every land use designation and every zoning designation that exists in the county, and then when we're done, we'll tell you what you can be. That's not how it works at all. It's, it's a due process thing. A specific question was asked by the applicant, and they're entitled to a specific answer to that specific legal question. If they would have asked a different question, there might have been a different answer. Um, it's fairly efficient with the church the other day. But the only one of those was a church. They came in and asked for a rezone, and we, we denied it. Because they thought that the way they would get a church is through a rezone. Then they came back in and asked for a conditional use permit for the exact same use, and we approved it. This was a completely different question. A specific question was asked here. So reading definitions for prime ag forest land and ag forest twenty into the record, that wasn't the question that was asked, and it wasn't the question that was evaluated. Um, one last thing here that I should probably show. Oh, yeah, you can just share it too. Yeah. It's the Quail Ridge Development here. Those are five acre parcels in blue, R five zoning approved in two thousand eighteen. Um, if you could pop up the soils there. So those are, those are prime ag soils. All they raised prime farm land. That was a two thousand eighteen approval. We're kind of looking at the same question here today. Um.
In an area identified as five acre.
Yes, in an area identified as five acre parcels, so I think that's all I have unless there were any other questions.
Dylan, you have any questions for staff? No, nope, okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and now close to uh and go to deliberation. Do you have any you want to say, Bill?
Sure.
You want to talk?
I would like to kick off deliberation. This is Bill Wilson for the record. Um, what we have here in front of you today is two separate applications and you need to take up the COC plan amendment first. Um, so I would ask you guys to focus on that first, deliberate on that. Um, as to your call to this to, you know, consider those options. Um, the COC plan, the the map amendment for the COC plan um is considered a legislative decision, whereas the follow up zoning is more is quasi judicial. So you have a lot of latitude, Mr. Bowman spoke to that and others, uh, Mr. Graham. And so, um, I I don't know if I, I am, I am of the belief that the COC plan can be reasonably interpreted to be have different components that are are furthered by one plan or by proposal, uh, while at the same time having others that it hurts. Um, in any time we have, for example, a uh the proposed division of land or at least the ability to do that, um, it might uh further the goals of of population growth and affordable housing while at the same time um in a reasonable uh from a reasonable opinion, um, causing detriment to rural pursuits or uh uh transportation or other things of that nature. So, um, I do think that there is ample evidence before the board to go either way on that decision. You've been given a lot of it here. Um, you also have the uh recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And you know, and those people are well are well intended and are good at their jobs. So I would just ask that, um, as you weigh that consideration, that you specifically identify the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan that you think are applicable to this and kind of link those to some of the information that you've been given um when you make that decision. The reason that you make that determination first is because I think everybody realizes this, but um if you approve that map amendment, um, then that kickstarts your analysis as to um accordance with the comprehensive plan on the zone amendment. Um, however, if you were to deny the COC plan amendment itself, um, then the zoning application um is kind of uh dead on arrival because it would probably then not be in accordance with the comprehensive plan that you have not changed. So we start with the COC plan amendment and depending on how you guys decide on that, maybe I'll chime back in uh for the next file. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, sounds good, thanks. All right. You want to start with something, you want me to start?
I can go. I've got a lot of notes here that um, I just want to say that um, I also listened to the um deliberation of the uh Planning and Zoning Commission on this file. I didn't listen to the testimony because I know I'm going to hear it all again. So I take the time to listen to what their deliberations and what their concerns are. And and um as I take note to those things, then I try to go and and study that in our comprehensive plan. So, you know, for the comprehensive uh map amendment, I think it has, it is a greater bar to cross. I truly believe as we've been doing these and we get more experience and I've argued this this file three different ways, maybe at the end of the day, who knows? But I mean, it it seems like it it as we learn more and we adjust our uh different priorities, we we look at it from a different aspect. Um, I just want to read a few things from the goals of the the comprehensive plan. And it says Bonner County intends to provide a transportation system that is safe, uncongested, and well maintained. That's a goal. Now, that doesn't mean that they're going to do that on every road. And and I already read this, but I'm going to reread it because I think these are important. Future development shall not adversely impact existing transportation system by reducing the quality or level of service or creating hazard or congestion. Roads within the new development shall be built to county standards and at the expense of the developer. Roads with the within the new development shall provide adequate access for fire, emergency vehicles, and routes of escape. Okay, and I'm going to move down to um the goal of the community design. It says Bonner County intends for new development to locate in areas with similar densities and compatible uses. Bonner County intends for the new development to minimize adverse impacts on adjacent areas. Bonner County intends to consider a protection of natural resources and rural features of the surrounding uses of the community in design and location of new development. Then we'll go down to agricultural and objective and policies. And in an evaluation of the current land use code should be conducted to ensure current regulations do not overtly hinder agricultural productivity and farm related activities. Variations within the land use code have had a potential to deter farmers from increasing production and constant growth in the agricultural section sector. Further, there is an opportunity to include regulations that promote agriculture, especially small acreage farming. Current zoning districts should be evaluated to determine if changes to density and zoning requirements can increase small acreage farming or small steel agricultural opportunities. So the argument's always going to be, what's small scale? Is it five acres? Is it ten acres? Is it twenty acres? And then we've seen that in the the different discussion all day long. So for me, what I'm getting at with all of this reading of this is that I don't think this does fit. I think the better fit for this is ag forest ten myself. I mean, that's truly, if you look at, okay, yeah, it touches um five, five acre parcels and there's a subdivision there that is not zoned that way. Um, and I do believe that this opens a door for more five acre units. And I do believe that the ten acre unit in here is the proper designation. So, I mean, there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, it has to be that way. And I think at the end of the day too, one of the things that we've done is we've kicked the can down the road on purpose to the um application for the subdivision. So they sort of do research during the application period of the subdivision. We'll learn about whether the fire or whether the roads, you know, we'll do a road study. I think all of these things are important things. I think that um we should be studying, they're like cut off, to see if it, you know, to see what we need to do. Now, is this development going to be the thing that kicks us over the top? Probably not, but there's a lot of use on that road that's never, that was never intended for. So we should at least look at it and and figure out what the what the way forward is. The problem I have is that with that is we're not going to go into a subdivision. This is going to go into a minor land division that have already been filed. And this thing will never see, and I'm sorry, but this is disingenuous to present this, is it's going to come back before the planning zoning and um and be discussed and and all of those things addressed. So because I know the minor land divisions have already been filed. And uh, so my recommendation is denial.
Yeah, we have the uh, the issue of the northwest corner with those lots that were not platted and were done wrongly. Even the one that touches, if you look at the map, I did pretty good, scored a ninety-eight in space relation. So I'm guessing that that five sided piece that touches, if there was a six inch post on that corner, it would border about four and a quarter inches of that property post. And I'm guessing that that five sided piece is going to be somewhere between about seven point nine and eight point two acres. I'm guessing. And I would bet money that I'm pretty darned close on that. So it doesn't even border a five at all. And the small one that it does border was an illegal flat. So I give no no precedence to that whatsoever. And I certainly see no reason to go smaller than ten. And for me, I think it should stay exactly as it's owned right now.
Go ahead, pause when it comes to the COM plan. Um, planning staff did an excellent job of showing exactly why this is improperly um um COM plan, has the improper COM plan designation. And even going back to the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision for denial was in direct conflict with the findings of facts that they adopted. And the very last bullet point says, this site is missing almost every criteria for its current land use designation of agricultural forestry. So how do we balance that with what's been said so far? The Planning and Zoning Commission agreed it is improperly COM plan designated. So the planning, the planning department has been able to demonstrate that through facts and the law. Um, that's the law. This is what the Planning and Zoning Commission has said. They, you know what, they're great volunteers to do a good job, but but I'm going to have to agree that I think there was, it's obvious here there was some built in bias um on their decision to start with. And they kind of really, really fumbled the football here by adopting these findings of fact. You read through every single one of them and it points to it's the ag forestry is a wrong designation. It's absolutely the wrong designation. And the problem I have is to remain consistent that we need to follow the law, when you look at the facts, when you look at the facts of the planning, when you hear the applicant's testimony, and when you look at the what the Planning and Zoning Commission actually said, what they adopted for their finding the facts, which is what will stand at the court. It says again, the site is missing almost every criteria for its current land use designation of agricultural forestry. So I would have to be a yes vote on the on the COM plan amendment, just based on the facts and the law. Right?
Oh, sorry, guys.
Yeah, you're not really right, Tom, but but this is what they adopted. And that it's exactly what, if you listen, if you listen to planning, if you listen to planning, they were absolutely able to to delineate that there is nothing on this property for the most part that actually shows it should have been originally just designated as ag forestry. So.
All right, guys, well, if he, if he, this is Bill Wilson for the record again. Um, this is, I think, the point then when you call for a motion, if there's nothing, if there's nothing left. I I would note that when we have a three member executive, um, reasonable minds can disagree. And so, um, that's just another example of how these decisions are really, really tough. And I give you guys credit for that, but um I think this would be the appropriate time for a motion.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion one way or the other from one of the.
Okay, I move to deny this project file AM zero zero one eight dash two zero requesting comprehensive plan amendment from ag forest land to rural residential based on the following conclusions.
So Steve, I think at this point you could just say for the for the reasons stated during deliberation.
For the reasons stated during the deliberation.
All right. And direct and direct planning staff to draft accordingly. I think I can get to that.
And direct planning staff to draft accordingly.
Well, am I satisfied with that motion for the rest of it?
Yep. Absolutely.
Okay, I think you're, well, go ahead. If there's more there, I don't have that one, I don't have that sitting in front of me, so let's make sure we get it all in. I just want to make sure the motion adequately reflects the findings that you guys have so that we are able to, planning staff's able to draft those appropriately and make sure that, you know, they're going to go.
The decision is based on the evidence submitted up to the time staff's report was prepared, testimony received at this hearing, or removed to adopt the previous findings of fact.
I don't want to say that.
You don't want to say that part? Because the previous finding of facts say that.
So we're not, yeah, okay. So you would adopt findings of, adopt findings of fact in a in a court or in furtherance of the deliberations that have been presented today.
Yeah, what you said.
There we go.
Yeah, this action does not result in the taking of private property.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or no, all of the folks say nay, and I'm going to be a nay. Um.
It's a roll call, she says.
Oh, sorry, you're right.
Commissioner McHale.
Nay.
Commissioner Ho.
All right.
Commissioner Bracha.
All right, ma'am.
All right, guys, so now having done that, we still need to address the second application for the rezone. Um, and so, um, this can be a relatively quick deliberation, given what you guys have decided. Um, but as I mentioned earlier, um, your first obligation in reviewing a zone change application is that to find whether or not it is it is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. If it if it doesn't accord with the plan, then it basically doesn't get off the ground. So, um, I don't know if we need to go into um much deliberation about the um the R five versus R ten designation. Um, because you might not need to get there, um, if you guys are going to vote the way I think that you've just evidenced that you will.
Yeah, and I think I don't think there's, I mean, I think the points were made if it hasn't, if it doesn't meet the COM plan, if it doesn't.
According to the COM plan.
Right. It's voted down and this deliberation is really based on the fact the COM plan, if we. It doesn't meet COM plan.
Right, so we, so you now have to recognize that the COM plan was not changed. And I think it's it's obvious from the nature of these hearings that you needed it, that the COM plan, future land use map had to be changed in order for the zone application to be in accordance with the plan. That's my.
That's the way I do one of you guys to state that.
All right, I'm moving to deny project file Z.
You know, you have to say, you need to deliberate.
At least deliberate. I mean, deliberate.
You got to deliberate on this one as well.
Okay, it didn't make, yeah, the COM plan didn't get changed, so therefore it does not meet, that's my.
Okay.
Justin.
Yeah, and I'm, I concur with that, um, that it doesn't make the bar to have the compensation.
And there's no point for me to deliberate.
You just deliberate with yourself.
I'll go deliberate myself later on.
All right, just so long as, I mean, if we are, with these type of contentious decisions, um, I anticipate that there will be judicial review down the road, whichever way it goes, that's okay, that's life. Um, but the more you deliberate, um, the better the court has, the more material the court has to help understand your decision. So, um, as long as you've made that finding, um, and that it's not in accordance with the comprehensive plan based on your refusal to change the future land use map, um, then I think that that will satisfy um a reviewing court. Tell me if I'm wrong.
All right.
Go ahead, Steve. All right, I make motions to deny project file ZC zero zero one five dash twenty. Request requesting a zone change from agricultural forest ten to AF ten to rural five based on the fact that it did not meet the COM plan change.
And I'll second the motion. Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, full call. I bet. You said wrong, Dave.
Commissioner McDonald.
Uh, nay.
Commissioner Foley.
Aye.
Commissioner Bracha.
Aye. Okay, and with that, it is four fifty-seven, and you adjourn this.